Welcome to the San Fernando City Council Special Meeting of March the 11th, 2025. Meeting is called. The order will call please.
Councilmember Alvarez?
Here.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Here.
Councilmember Salazar?
Here.
Vice Mayor Marty Medina?
Here.
Mayor Rico Medina?
Here. Thank you. We will now, the council will be going into closed session for two items. Conference with real property negotiators and an item A and I could be as conference with labor negotiations. And we will be going to closed session, returning back out, returning back here to see if the Senator Porter will actions adjourn this meeting and then adjourn to the next where he was city councilman. Council is now going into closed session.
Thank you.
Item A, the Seminario County Supervisor Jackie Spear will be moved into Town Hall at the San Bruno Recreation uh, oh, I'm sorry, she didn't have, but I'm sorry, the lights are around here. You can see, yes, thank you, Mike. Good evening, please go ahead.
Sorry about that, I just walked in, I didn't have time to fill out this.
No, no worries.
I just wanted to come in, I'm gonna make comment later on today too, but just to comment, the John Muir PTA had their crafty this past weekend, it was a sellout event. And I think that we've been really trying to teach our kids what it is to go the extra mile. And I wanted to come and really thank the city's park department, but especially the police department, because we had to submit an alcohol license, and when the alcohol license was submitted, there was an error in the address. And I apologize, I don't have it in front of me, I cannot remember the name of the officer who called and was so kind to say, I'd be happy to change the license, the date, the address for you. I will drive it to the rack myself, so that you don't have to go back to the rack and make sure that they sign it, and then leave it there for you to pick up, so you don't have to go through the whole process again of filling out the application. So huge kudos to the police department, it's those little things that really make a difference. Big thank you to Travis, Jennifer, and to Janelle, who made, who really worked with the PTA to make the night a success. And we look forward to doing the same thing next year as the event grows. So thanks to everybody, because without all of you, we couldn't have made it happen, thank you.
Thank you very much for taking the time to acknowledge staff. No other public comments? Okay, we'll go back to announcements. Okay, we'll go back to announcements, presentations. Item A, Seminole County Supervisor Jackie Spear will be holding the town hall here at the Recreation Aquatics Center in this room. This Thursday from six to seven. And of course, a couple of the speakers that she has regards to the fire mitigation and hazardous that has come out of state in addition to immigration rights. And we appreciate that. This is her first town hall meeting that she's holding within her district since being sworn in as a supervisor. Uh, next, we'll move on to item six, consent calendar. All items are considered routine or implemented in earlier council action may be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion unless requested. There will be one single public comment period for all items in this section unless a council member requests to pull an item for separate vote. Any items for separate vote in consent? Any items on consent that folks will have a statement or a question?
Yes.
Yes, which one?
Item G, item H.
G and H, anything else? Let's go to G, consider adoption of a resolution approving final map and authorize the city manager to execute an improvement agreement for the Highlands Ridge Project eight at eight, five, zero Glenview Drive, Vice Mayor.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's really great to see this project moving forward. It's been um, kind of stuck in neutral, not reversed for a while. So, the laws of our residents that were filmed every fallow. Uh, the corner of Glenview and San Bruno Avenue where gas station was, where the former church was. This uh, project will be bringing forward additional housing. Uh, my question for staff is, after we approve this final map. What is, what is the best estimate for when permits move through? And about approximately how long would it take to possibly give a thought to share? Just whatever it could be. It's hard to predict construction, but.
Director.
Yes. Through the mayor, the uh, the permits are, the construction permits are still going through the plan check process. Uh, they're nearing its completion. We are inquiring with with uh, most of the major projects to get information on the construction phasing. And that information is going to be put on 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 the funding projects map. Very shortly, so that all those types of information, the approved plans, the expected dates are are going to be available to anyone who's interested. Fortunately, right now, we don't have that feedback yet. Uh, but we do anticipate that they have indicated they do plan to start uh, and pull their permits in the near future. It is going to be a multi-year project.
Great, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, just wanted to continue with a question about the the community engagement part. We've been very good about making sure that we have these kickoff meetings to let the residents know. So is this something that we can anticipate with this project as well?
I'm looking into this. I'm not aware that we have a requirement for those. Uh, I think there have been a number of developers that have voluntarily proposed to do that. But we will inquire and encourage that uh, city ventures that develop this project and and the other large, larger developers to do that.
Thank you.
Any questions, comments on that? Item H, consider adoption of a resolution approving the design of Sweeney Ridge Emergency Water Main Rehabilitation Project, Vice Mayor.
Yeah, yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And this is, I will just for comment just to highlight that. You have aging infrastructure that pretty much all our pipes at some point or the other need to be replaced. And this project allows us to proceed quicker to replace a water main that is failing. And so um, when it's one point four, four, five, one point, one million, four hundred and forty-five thousand, two hundred dollar project to replace this pipe. And so we just wanted to acknowledge the efforts to do this, to to expedite it and let the public know that we are working to make sure that our water system is all. Thank you.
Any question, any comments from colleagues? Uh, any public comment? Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, yes, public comment.
Mr. Mayor, uh, turns out there is a representative from city ventures here if you would like to get answers to some of the questions that were asked.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, is there any public comment?
I have no speaker, please.
Please, hello there, council. My name is Gary Dunbar, representing the out of the four city ventures, the Highland Ridge Project. Um, just wanted to thank you guys for the the comments and mention speaking to timeline in a little bit. Uh, we're anticipating around six months for site work and then another twelve months for vertical construction. Uh, with regards to public notification, I believe there's a code section that references all of the public notification for the nearby residents and we intend to do so.
Great, thank you. Thank you, thank you for being here and thank you for stepping forward. We appreciate that. Any other on consent? On consent? Do you have?
Comment on this uh, project at Sweeney Ridge.
Okay.
Sweeney Ridge, in terms of public mind, I know is extraordinarily difficult terrain. The pipe is uh, on literally on a hillside. And when they have a water main break, which it has many times, it is a very difficult correction. Usually have to bring outside contractors. So I think this is a long overdue project. That's it.
Thanks, thank you. Be no other public comments, no other comments from colleagues. We'll bring it back to us as far as items six A through six I, any action?
Who to approve?
Uh, motion Hamilton, second Salazar to approve all of consent. All votes in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Recorded as a five oh unanimous vote. Move on to public hearing, please.
Continue the public hearing to consider adoption, reading by title only and awaiting a further reading of an ordinance entitled. An ordinance of the city council of the city of San Bruno, adopting by reference chapter four point ninety of the Seminole County Ordinance Code Tobacco Retailer Permit. Repealing and replacing in its entirety, San Bruno Municipal Code Chapter six point five two Tobacco Retailer Permit. In connection with such adoption and finding the amendment exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act to April eighth, twenty twenty five.
Thank you, Director.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Uh, on February eleventh, uh, there was a ten diagram on the topic of adopting the Seminole County Tobacco Retailer Ordinance by reference. Uh, the council uh, passed that action and set a public hearing to this date. Uh, and this agenda item, the staff recommendation is to continue it to April eighth of twenty twenty five.
Thank you. Were there any public comments?
I have no speaker.
With that, then the hearing right of seven A is continued until the city council's regular meeting at seven P M on April the eighth, twenty twenty five. Next is item A, conductive business.
Consider appointments to fill current vacancies on the San Bruno Community Foundation and Commission's boards and committees, emergency preparedness committee, in-person recreation commission youth representative.
Thank you very much. I'm going to add to that process. Um, what I've asked the colleagues is just the applicant's names and positions, just so they can have the visual in front of us, just to make the process smoother. So what we are going to do is we will take the San Bruno Community Foundation first, then we'll go to emergency preparedness, then we'll go to the Park and Recreation Commission Youth Rep. What we will do is I will ask for nominations. If a person is nominated and receives a second, then they will go uh, into the second round, however many names we have. Then the council will select the individual that they wish, whether there's one, two or three names. Any questions? With that, we'll open it up for nominations for the San Bruno Community Foundation. Uh, council member Salazar.
I would like to nominate Jessica. Second.
There's, okay, is there any others? Council member Alvarez.
I would like to nominate Carlos around everyone.
Is there a second? Your second? Hearing seeing none, then that does not go forward. Any other nominations? If not, is there any action by council? For an appointment?
The chair will be appoint Jessica to this position.
There's a motion and second to appoint Jessica to the community foundation. All votes in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Recorded as a five oh unanimous vote. Next, we'll move on to emergency preparedness committee. There is one seat. One vacancy seat expires on ten thirty-one, twenty twenty-six. We have three potential candidates. Are there any nominations?
I would to nominate Ison Alon.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any other nominations? Councilmember Alvarez.
I would like to nominate Steve Paganelli.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Are there any other nominations? Hearing seeing none, we have two candidates. We're going to have the city clerk calling alpha order and you will select one uh, of the two, just one of the two. City clerk.
Councilmember Alvarez, Steve Paganelli. Councilmember Hamilton.
Ison Alon.
Councilmember Salazar.
Steve Paganelli.
Vice Mayor Marty Medina.
Ison Alon.
Mayor Rico Medina.
Steve Paganelli. So um, by majority vote, Steve Paganelli will be on the emergency preparedness committee. Next, we'll move on to the Park and Recreation Commission Youth Rep. One vacancy seat expires upon high school graduation. We have two applicants. Is there a nomination?
Through the mayor, I'd like to nominate Panchal or something.
I will second.
Second.
And is there any other nominations? We have one person to take action. Or do you have another nominee?
I hate to uh, not encourage any. My, I guess you said it wasn't able to to interview, to get an opportunity to talk to them, but uh, yeah, I think in the interest of the people for participation.
And you have, no one is required to be present. Is there any action then?
Go to Panchal. Panchal or something.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second, city clerk, I forgot that second. All votes in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Passed a unanimous vote, five oh vote. Want to thank those folks that did apply. Stepping forward to volunteer their time to get back to this community. The city council appreciates that and of course, uh, when other positions and or on the same body that were there were interested, we encourage you to apply. Thank you, colleagues.
Through the mayor, we have one speaker, please. Paco.
Thank you and good evening. Uh, I really, I didn't really need to come up anymore at this point because you already made a nomination, but there's a bit of prematurely, but uh, thank you for the appointment. We look forward to the continuing partnership. Um, I am speaking on behalf of San Bruno Community Foundation. So again, thank you.
And thank you for uh, your participation on the foundation and being there during the interview process as well. Thank you. And and I want to say as well, thanks. Next, we'll move on to item B.
Receive a mid-year financial update and consider adoption of a resolution amending the fiscal year twenty twenty-four to twenty-five budget.
Well. C and O. This is going to be the rest of the evening adjourned. Thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor. With the mayor's indulgence, I would like to request that we, that I give the presentation on both B and C at this time. Do you want us to read both items or at least could you, city clerk? Could you read D, I, C, please?
Receive report on the city's long range forecast for fiscal years twenty twenty-four to twenty-five to fiscal year twenty twenty-nine to thirty.
So we have the two items B and C, which CFO has asked and we're permitted to go ahead and take both items simultaneously. So that means you'll have a presentation on both. We will sit and uh, be diligent and listen to you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Nick Pagaros. I'm the city's administrative services director as well as chief financial office. Uh, this evening, I'm happy to present to the council a couple of items in this presentation. First is a resolution amending the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five budget. That's this current fiscal year. And then also to transmit an update on the city's forecasts for consideration as the council is moves through the budget process for next fiscal year. So to start with the mid-year budget update, uh, I think it was last year when the council had asked me to sort of get the bottom line uh, at the beginning so that. So that we could sort of work, work our way through the process rather more expeditiously. Uh, so the bottom line is that the uh, that at the mid-year forecasting or estimating. That the general fund will end with about a six hundred thousand dollar surplus. That is on a sixty-seven point one-two million dollar budget. So it's slightly less than, slightly less than one percent. However, despite that good news, there are some areas of concern that I'd like to bring to your attention as we go into our next budget cycle. Uh, the first is that um, our taxes are considerably lower um, and I'm sorry, our revenues are considerably lower. Three, three large areas. Uh, the first is taxes and this is based since cannabis and transient occupancy tax or budget numbers for. All three areas were more aggressive than what what is, what is passing, what is, what has happened over the last nine, ten, ten, ten months or so. Um, the one area or the most significant area where we're realizing lower taxes is in the cannabis taxes. As you may recall, the cannabis operator presented to the council a one point four million dollar annual revenue. And while I can't disclose their actual receipts, it's considerably lower uh, than that. And I would add that that was a new revenue source that we plugged into the budget only half a year. So it's a smaller impact this year. Uh, however, in future years, uh, we were looking at one point four million and growing each year revenue source uh, to support general fund operations. Um, the other area of lower revenues, parking fines or parking citations, paid parking programs, citations to be precise. Uh, as we've talked over the last couple of council meetings, uh, that the staff originally budgeted for parking fines in the general fund. Uh, there are a variety of reasons for that. One of the most significant being that the the need, the ability to un, to segregate or to separate the two. The fines from the paid parking district, paid parking area and the remainder of the city uh, is is complicated, but we're working through that. And then finally, um, the gift from San Antonio County's um, controllers office to almost all of the finance people every year. For probably the last twenty years, we've been doing this for twenty-five years and I think that for the past twenty years, we get a lovely note. Uh, saying that something is going on with X S E rap slash be able to license fees and lose effectively. Uh, we're one of several county, one of a few small number of counties in the state of California. Where um, the apportionment of property taxes uh, and relationship to school, to school funding. And um, the education optimization, uh, education optimization revenue funds, uh, E R. Uh, that formula works against cities or against communities that have um, that have high assessed property evaluation group and declining enrollment in in schools. And so the county has advised us that we are at risk of losing a portion of the V L F revenue. And I, I bracketed in risk because each year I bring this up and I'm sure my credit sisters brought this up and miraculously it gets solved in Sacramento. However, uh, I mean, we won't know that probably until the junior July timeframe. On the expenditure side, the good news is balancing out the lower revenues are expended, our our personnel and operating budgets are coming in significantly lower. Yeah, and the net of these two is that six hundred thousand dollar estimated surplus. So those are the highlights of the general fund. I'm going to move on now to uh, in the staff report, I also spoke about the the rec or the Recreation Aquatics Center. Finances, which are too early to really forecast. And then we don't have history with this building and how revenues, revenues will will turn out. But I do want to move over to the parking fund because we received a couple of questions in the past and and I want to give the council an update. Uh, so uh, this, this slide or this, this presentation of finances are for the first eight months of the fiscal years of July one through February twenty-eight. Um, I want to, I'll highlight a couple of important items. Uh, the first is that we have our citation revenue, of of the revenue and the expenditures necessary to process that revenue. Uh, we have estimated those uh, numbers. There is a net revenue, meaning the revenue exceeds the expense. We have estimated those numbers. There is a net revenue, meaning the revenue exceeds the expenditure. However, as I mentioned earlier, we were, we're working with estimates here based on our initial analysis of how citation revenue and the and the corresponding costs impact the overall parking fund. But I think it's an important piece to note that the citation revenue is a, is a component to the success of the program. Another item that I want to bring to council's attention is that we have, our past practice has been with, with inter-fund services. When the general fund, when I prepare this report, a portion of my salary and the administration of the parking fund is, or other funds will be charged back to those, to ensure that the general taxpayers are not subsidizing the other funds. We have not made the determination yet if this fund will, will receive those charges. There has been a good deal of staff time that has been dedicated to this particular program. However, we have not reported that. And again, this is part of the startup costs that we see of the program. And so in next fiscal year, we will, we will need to work through what the appropriate personnel costs as well as the overages. Another point to, to, another item to point out here is that this includes a pro, a pro rata share of the loan repayment to the general fund to try to present a more comprehensive picture of the parking fund's finances. At this time, as mentioned in the staff report, the determination of whether the loan will be repaid through the, the current year payments towards the loan, whether that will be repaid, we need to hold off, or the recommendation is that we hold off making that determination until we have the books closed for the parking fund to see if we can actually afford to repay the loan in this first initial year. Again, it's a startup enterprise and these, these choices are not intended to persist beyond a, you know, a couple of years, but deferring the loan repayments that may be necessary to balance the books. At the end of the day, we have an operating deficit based on this for the first eight months of about two percent of the revenue. I would say when we're looking at budgeting, two percent is a pretty darn close number to what, to be within two percent of expenditures is pretty close. It's, of course, we want to be right on the nose, but we're looking at the number of factors, particularly in this fund having it as a startup business or enterprise. To be that close is, is pretty good news. Of course, lots of assumptions that I've already laid out, but this is where we are at this current, current point in time. So moving on, the staff report identifies multiple budget amendment requests for fiscal year twenty-five. They're presented as both primarily expenditures and what you see here on the revenue side are transfers in from other funds in order to pay for the items that are, that are listed in the, in the resolution. Resolution does identify the, the expense as well as the source of the funds. The first and foremost I want to bring to your attention is the eight-hundred-twenty-thousand-dollar use of one-time, one-time capital fund or one-time revenue fund. As we, as, as you saw in the previous slides, we're estimating a surplus of approximately six hundred thousand dollars. That's an estimate at this point. We would like to move forward with many of these charges or many of these expenditures that are included in the resolution. And in order to do that, we need to, it would be best practice to identify funding sources that we have currently. What I would say is that as we close the books and we, whatever the surplus is or ends up being, that will offset part of this transfer. The other piece I wanted to point out is that some of the stormwater expenditures, the projects that are included, maybe eligible for measure Q reimbursement, we'll talk about that a little bit. Make sure, item just on this evening approved the Sweeney Ridge project and there is a need for a budget transfer there, so that is in the water fund. And in sum, the total, the, the net of the total budget amendments is about five-point-two million dollars. So that concludes my mid-year report as well on the general fund. And now I'd like to jump into the five-year forecast, please. So one thing that I, that I believe we shared last year and every time we look at a forecast is that I can almost guarantee that the forecast is not one-hundred percent on, on, on point. We do our best given a number of estimates and assumptions that are made based on information we have today and the forecasts are all about assumptions. So I'll walk through those first. For the most important assumption here is that over the course of the five years, there is no assumption that service levels will change from what, what is currently provided to the community and to the community. The, in order to do that, we need to maintain our current level of expenditures for personnel costs. Reduction of personnel, reduction of staff would, would impact services. And so when we look at how the growth factors that lead to the forecast on the revenue side, we look at between two and five percent based on individual revenue, individual revenue characteristics. So for example, the property taxes is the average of growth is between three and a half and four percent. So we would budget that, which is our largest revenue, but some of our other revenues we may budget more conservatively. And then on the expenditure, on the expenditure side, looking at both personally costs as well as as well as contracts and services utilities, we have factors that apply to these. We incorporate known and anticipated events. One of the, one of the big items here is anticipated development, whether it be housing or commercial. And the reason that that is important is that as those properties, as those, as redevelopments or development encourage parcels that maybe may have been on the tax rolls and over assessed value come onto the tax rolls at a higher improved value. In the, in the five-year forecast, we have done our best and we've been fairly conservative anticipating the like the, just the general economy and the speed of, of construction in some of our larger areas. So we have, we have been very conservative on, on the impacts of housing and commercial development. Measure Q is a, a new revenue source that, that, that we have and we'll talk about that in a second in the next presentation for the next agenda item. But measure Q, as I mentioned earlier, has the opportunity to backfill or to fund projects, particularly in stormwater that, that currently have no funding source. And we can, that would reduce the impact on the general fund. And then finally, the city net sale is an important consideration in that some of the, this, there were, there are elements of our relationship, the general fund's relationship with the, with city net such as free internet service or internet service provided by the city net enterprise to the general funded cost. We will need to pay for those now that city net is, is, is our one city net. It is transferred to forecast. And so those costs are factored into the linear forecast, the, the five-year forecast. So just to highlight a couple of general fund revenue and expenditures that are going to use in this term, in this context, I'll use resources as opposed to revenue. The reason for that is that not all of the funds that come into the general budget are true revenues. They transfers from their funds, reimbursements for, for services provided. I've broken this up into historical and forecasts. So as we look at the historical general fund revenue, we see a general growth in twenty-four. Fiscal year twenty-four and twenty-three, there was, there were benefits from the ARPA funding that, that that provided additional resources to, to the city. The reason that we see a deep decline in twenty fiscal year twenty-five is that we moved this fiscal year, so fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. We moved community services, I'm sorry, the Recreation Aquatics operations to a special revenue fund. And we also moved the community development services to a special revenue. And the reason for that was to provide a true picture of the net revenue or the net surplus deficit in the general funded future years. As we look at going forward, given the assumptions that we had placed in the, in the budget, we're looking at general, general fund revenues, rising steadily. The most important bar for us is the blue bar, the bottom piece, your taxes. That is not growing as quickly as we had forecast last year, given that the cannabis tax revenue is not materializing as, as was, as was as was provided to council during, during their meeting, their public hearings. I would add that a big source of revenue that was considerably, that was increasing at a good clip, interest earnings will eventually, we were anticipating that over the five-year timeframe, that, that, that those interest rates will, will decline closer to two percent. Right now, we're at four percent. Other uncertainty here is VLF and the vehicle license fee that I talked about earlier as a perennial gift from the county assessor's office or the county comptroller's office. And then finally, one very important element here is to highlight that this does not include the Walmart sales tax base. That is not factored in. As we look at requirements or expenditures, and again, there are some non, 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 there are some requirements that are, are less expenditures and they are moving funds between city funds. You'll see again a similar trend where the expenditures were increasing and then they, they decreased in fiscal year twenty-five. The increases generally correspond with the revenue increases. As we look going forward, again, clearly there is a steady increase in expenditures. We are one of the big areas that resulted in offsetting the loss of revenue for this year, this current fiscal year, which was vacancy rate or vacancies to staff. Those salary savings, we are decreasing the assumption to a more sustainable rate long-term. One thing I would just highlight is that several of the vacancies that were, that are being held or anticipated to be filled relatively quickly after the city net city net transfer. That's all I have to say on the expenditure side. And then finally, sort of the plus and minus where we are at the net bottom line. We do have a forecast of a structural deficit, but I do want to put that into context of the overall general fund expenditure and revenue budget in fiscal year twenty-six, so the year that we're planning for. The gap right now is about one-point-eight percent, which is something that was, was adopted in budget principles. City staff will be presenting a balanced budget to the city, to the city council. So that is something that we will be looking towards. And the, and the deficit increases to about five-point-two percent of, of revenue, I'm sorry, of, of budget as we get closer to the end of five-year forecast. And so that will require annual exercises to ensure that we are able to meet the, to deliver a balanced budget. So finally, to wrap up the, the presentation, we are seeking council's action to adopt a resolution amending the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five budget. And with that, that's the only action they are requesting this evening. I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you. Thank you very much for the reports and the information. Questions from colleagues on the presentation, please? You have questions? Vice Mayor?
Yes, thank you. The cannabis. We, we had communications with them and kind of figured out like, so what's up? Why? Slow start? Just kind of whatever feedback and if I heard you agree, we're going to be taking that reduction going forward. The air was great for a while, thinking that what was going to happen and it didn't, but just wanted to hear something to share with the community here. What? Everyone think? What happened?
Vice Mayor Medina, thank you very much for the question. I've had many conversations with folks in Embar and there was a lot of having and hawing about what has occurred and has not occurred. And one of the things that I've made clear to them is we, we didn't change any of their rules to the process. Everything they did, everything they knew coming into the city of San Bruno with our existing regulations, nothing's changed. And despite all that, I think their forecasting for how robust the cannabis industry would be in San Bruno just proved not to be the case. There are some conversations around signage and there are some conversations around access and parking, but as I think this council knows, we accommodated them or provided accommodation to them for the, we'll call the satellite parking lot, a couple of commercials down. And to answer your question really directly, no, we don't have any good understanding as to why the numbers are so dramatically lower. I think the CFO has been kind. The numbers are dramatically lower. And will we, appear to, will likely remain that way throughout the course of their time here.
Thank you. So we called hearing a couple of council meetings ago about parking fund and whether it really should be an enterprise. And it seems, I just wanted to kind of ask that question. Is, is that the right style that we should add? Like, it seems an interesting situation. We've had a lot of things with going on with parking program and it's like, wanted to, is the right way to match? Maybe in the first place.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Medina. I think that the, the, it's, it's less a determination of whether it should be an enterprise fund or a special revenue fund. They have very different implications. I think it really is a policy question. If it's an enterprise fund, then it is a self-supporting, self-supporting fund. So that is the goal of the parking fund. And it's self-supporting, meaning there's no general tax dollars that are, that are used to finance the, to, to support. The, if it's a special revenue fund, there are opportunities, there is a clear distinction. If the revenue doesn't meet the expenditures, then then there needs to be some backstop and the backstop is the general fund. We, yeah, if it stays as a enterprise fund, then my job is to advise council to the greatest extent possible what it will take on the revenue side in order for the expenditure side in order to at least break even. If it's a special revenue fund, then the pressure then becomes adding to the other demands on the general fund, primarily unless there's another resource that we can use as to balance or to service the backstop of the special revenue. So it's, I apologize, it's not a simple answer. It really is a policy consideration.
No, thank you, thank you. I, I sense that. I, I we've been council's proposed changes to the parking program. Whether or not it's the right fund or not, or special revenue fund, I mean, rely on your advice on that, but it just kind of reminds everyone that the changes that we've been asked have to make, they haven't been implemented yet and there are going to be consequences of those changes to figure out whether it's more, less enforcement. How are we going to balance this out? It's, it's not sustainable. And, and as for the public, staff is working on a number of different Staff is working on a number of different things to, to see how it's gonna, those changes are going to be implemented and what they're going to result in. So I just. Figured it was an opportunity to, to look at whole parking program and, and the, the type of fund and it's like. We'll get to the point later to talk about. A repayment term, whether it's better to go for a five year. Five year repayment, right now seven or four, is that right? So that it, it can not be having such a big uh, debt that it could be spread out over a longer time. Kind of like back in the day when people buy cars. For five years now, it's like it's coming for seven years because. It just kind of makes it more, uh. Important in the budget that for people to have. Thank you for the answer. I think you stole a little more, Mr. Mayor, um. So just making sure I clearly heard you for Walmart dot com until that's resolved. The projection doesn't include any of the Walmart funding at all. If you can put that slide back up because we were, back in the day, I think we were approximately four million dollars a year is what we. Were getting when we started that agreement. And it seemed like that's what our deficit is as it's going forward. So that's a really big uncertainty that we're dealing with, that we've been dealing with for the last couple of years and. I guess the legal question is, so the public's aware. Where are we with that? Uh, legal challenge and where would the answer go? This is a year from now, it could be two years, it could be three years from now, but if you can put that slide up, please. That'd be great. It, it should provide for. Just one more. Sid.
That's bringing me to the slide, I got revenue.
Sid, that's it. So, okay, let me just go to the city attorney real quick and then we'll go right back.
Sure.
Okay, so uh, Mayor Medina and Vice Mayor Medina, I think there's probably a question that can be answered by Nick about the. About how it factors in here, but then the question you had was, where are we in this? Um, and we received notices from C D T F A, the state agency, saying that we needed to. Apportion, re-apportion those sales tax revenues according to their reading of the law. And as you know, we brought a legal challenge against the state. We're still making our way through the administrative process, appealing their decision. And a parallel course, we've gone to the courts to say, we'd like the courts to determine. We're still in the process of, uh, we have a body to the, to the merits of the case, the state filed demer. Um, it will probably be at least another year before we get to the. To the, uh, to the substance of the matter and, um. If we get that far. If this is, that the state is acceptable in their demer, we may have to just go back to. The administrative process and then work our way through that and uh, appeal through. To B T F A and then, you know, accomplish the tax appeal. Long story short, there's. Quite a bit of uncertainty for a long period of time as to the status of those sales tax revenues.
Go to you. Yes.
Thank you. Um, so to answer the question of the relationship between, if I heard the question correctly, the relationship between the deficit. And the Walmart monies, um, and it would might the Walmart monies address the deficit, is, is that the?
Pretty much that's, as I'm looking. As I'm looking. Forward, then it was four million, maybe I, I just want to see if I was correct. If we were receiving. Four million, which we were in the past. Then we'd be in much better shape, obviously. Just wanted to. See where. Right now, we're not including any of that revenue going forward.
Correct, correct. Um, you, you, the council may be aware that we did use, uh, to balance this year's budget, we did use some of the Walmart money. Uh, the objective, we received six million dollars a year. Uh, six million a year roughly, uh, so it probably fluctuates a bit, but we received about six million dollars a year. Um, we did, the term we used was sequester, um, of four million dollars last year and the goal, and, and this does not include. Uh, the two million dollars, I believe next year, if I'm not mistaken, we're, we're trying to fan our way off of, or. Reduce the use of the two million dollars, we're trying to reduce that over the period in the event that we may not receive anything in the future. Um, but to, to answer your question, yes, um. Six million dollars and if we have that six million dollars available, which we don't. At least in, in a very conservative interpretation, we don't have that available, uh, right now, um, then the deficit.
Got it. So the. In addition. The, the L F, the three mil- three million right now is what they're telling us, and then we don't know sometimes. It varies what we actually get. So adding the three million and that six million, that's a large part of our revenue, that. We, it's hard to budget when we, there's so much uncertainty, when we don't. Have access and taxes to the funds that we were glad to leave or told we were going to get at some certain point and now it's a question. Just a comment, I guess.
And Mr. Mayor, if I may, just, just my comment is, if, if I, if all of the, and I think the city manager who expresses in, in the past. All of the good work that the council did to get the Walmart agreement in place, to get the cannabis apps in place. Really addressed this core issue and now those, all that good work is, uh, either, uh, stuck in, uh, sort of. Administration and administrative appeals or legal. Legal sort of window or, um, the estimates that were provided to us as of the cannabis side are just both. Are egregiously high in comparisons to our actual risks.
Thank you. Thank you. And the V L F, as you were indicating, is a day, shall we say, an unfortunate dance if we go through, and not just us. All cities and towns, county, I remember speaking to the former mayor of South City and said. If we don't get the V L F for the conference, and it was like, here's what we're going to have to do, the cuts to services we're going to have to make. So, uh, it truly really impacts a lot of us and it's always the uncertainty. We'll have to go to battle up in Sacramento in hopes that we can, again, it restored, um.
Counselor Matt. Thank you, um, thank you for the presentation, uh. Mr. Seaver. Uh. For the, my question is about, I'm going back to the parking fund. Um, we had heard previously, and then you mentioned again tonight, that, um, the. That it's difficult to portion out the, um. I guess both the, both the enforcement, um, the enforcement cost and the revenues from, uh, from citations. For the paid parking program versus the entire city and that we're working on that. What's the timeline for? Do we think that that's going to get figured out? Is that something that we're going to be able to? To have as part of our, as part of our, uh, budget decision-making for this, this year's budget? Is that coming soon? Being able to complete that analysis?
Thank you, Councilmember Hamilton, uh, just confirming that the Assistant City Manager on the actual date that we are scheduled to come back to council, the part in fun. Uh, so this analysis is, uh, teed up to be part of the report to council on the second meeting in April.
Okay, so that's going to be pulled into all the other, all the other. Exactly, that's great, thank you. Okay, I just wanted to make sure that was going to be something we're going to have there, our tool box as we make credit issues. As far as questions go, all my questions were. Answered, thank you, um, for the kind of, which I said in advance, I have comments, so I'll save those for the comment, comment time.
Any, uh, questions?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I just want to clarify, um, from your presentation, um, that one factor, um, for revenue is, uh, from, coming from. The, um, the enforcement, so the processing of the, the, uh, the ticket fees. So what happens if the enforcement is cut down? So are, are, are we expecting deficit because we're not making, generating revenue from the? The enforcement or, or generating the ticket?
Thank you for the question, Councilmember Alvarez, um. The. This program is so new, it's difficult for me to look at the data and make assumptions about what might happen. If we modify something, uh, we, we are working on the line item, you know, sort of what is the revenue between. Between various hours, different days. We can provide that information. Enforcement is a, is a very different, um, sort of, um. Enforcement requires maybe not to participate or not to participate or not to follow a program. And so it's not, I, I wouldn't say from a financial perspective that I could really look at the citation revenue. And determine if we reduce enforcement, that that would have a reduction in expenditures intuitively, I, it, it seems logical that would be the case. But I don't, I, I don't believe I'll have data available. Until, you know, we have more experience on a citation lease and that would be working closely with police to help.
Thank you, um, the reason why I ask, um. Uh, we have given the staff a direction, um, for, um, the, um, eight items. To look at and that will be presented in April. And is this something that will be part of, of the, uh, presentation? Because we are requesting to have the enforcement, um, lowered. And given that, um, the presentation, we only have, um, point five, I think from this size. If we cut down the enforcement, then that would affect the, uh, the forecasted revenue?
So we are prepared, Councilmember Alvarez, we are prepared to, on the, on the second meeting in April. We will be prepared to quantify the, the lost revenue from the paid parking. Uh, for various timeframes, the council may want to look at. Uh, on the citation side again, I, I, I don't know, we can look at that as well as on a time basis, but I don't necessarily know that that will translate. Into a definitive. Increase or decrease as we look at, at the day. And so, you know, I think that. The, the best, the best, the best sort of, um, sort of approach that I would take to the citation revenue is to sort of wait and see, see what happens with the revenue. Citation revenue in concept as the, as the. Program matures, citation revenue would naturally go down because compliance would fill up. Uh, people don't want to get that ticket. And so, you know, if we assume perhaps, and I, you know, I don't want to go straight too far off here, but if we assume that. Five hundred and sixty thousand for the first eight months is sort of the high point because it's the beginning of the program, then we can expect that to naturally decrease over time. As folks, as compliance for the program increases. Lots of assumptions and not, I, I can't give you exact numbers this evening, but I, but intuitively, that's my, that's my guess.
This is quite a sound one, I can't. Um, in, in looking through the requests for adjustments, I think most of these look. Like they look very necessary. Adjustments spread over different funds. I had a question about the, uh, technology capital item for improvements to the, you know. The equipment here in this building. Um, I would disagree that we need to make some improvements, but, um, it, it seems like. We didn't do a very good job in setting it up. If the building's not that old, the equipment's not that old. Uh, what reassurances do we have that if we make this hundred and twenty thousand dollar investment, that it's going to be a better result? Um. And just generally, if you can tell me what the approach is going to be that, uh, will be different from before.
Sure, um, House member. So those are the. There are two components of the requests that are before you this evening. Uh, first is to, um. Clearly address some of the challenges we've had in this room. When. Uh, the cameras were, when, I think, when the, uh, room was set up for, uh, both public purposes as well as, as, uh. City council purposes. Then sort of the needs and the relationship between what we, the technology that we purchased and the technology that we had, which was the Tricaster. Love Tricaster from the senior center, uh, those were not, uh, meshed well, uh, together. In the, in that process, that phase. And so, um, now that the facility, now the project is closed, uh, we can sit down with the vendor. And focus on ensuring that any warranty issues are fixed because there is very, there's highly likely that there. May be some equipment that wasn't configured properly or may have, um, and may have. There may be faulty pieces, um, that are impacting Tricaster. But more importantly, integrating the Tricaster, that was something that, that we. If you can say, uh, integrating Tricaster wasn't laid out, I mean, to the project, I wasn't here, but I think it was laid out to the whole project. Um, the other piece of the, uh, of, of the improvements are to the rooms downstairs to make them more, more dynamic and accessible. Uh, to show tech, to, uh, to share. To allow, um, the baby to be used for greater purposes. Other than perhaps just a, a very simple slide deck, uh, something that is more appealing to folks who are going to do. We're going to have a, uh. Multi, sort of. Multi-functioning, multi-faceted, uh, different screen presentation rather than one screen, uh, presentation. And so, um, right now we have quotes, that's how we arrived at the budget number, uh, we were diligently to ensure that. Hey, we deal with the technology issues in this room. And then that's our first priority, and then the second priority to work through, uh, enhancing the technology downstairs and, and anything in the, the conference room. That can be improved.
It, it is proportionate, this request for, um. Contractor work, uh, or is it all equipment versus? Next gen.
To ensure both, uh, most of the equipment we believe that we have, uh, we believe we have most of the equipment, at least in this room. Uh, there may be, um, uh. You know, there may be, uh, through your conversation with the city manager, if you have feedback about things that might be tweaked, this may be, this may, this is probably the ideal time to, to do that, whether. It be with the lighting or. But most of the, most of this is contractor, uh, rather than technology.
You, you mentioned the Tricaster and I know one, one of the reasons we had Tricaster in place was because it were broadcasted to channel one. I'm assuming that's not going to be the case anymore, won't be broadcasting to a TV feed, will we?
So the intent of this project is to restore the council meetings to a similar functionality as what we have at the senior center. So broadcasting YouTube, broadcasting to channel one, having that, you know, there was, there were, of course, some challenges even at the senior center with the, with the Tricaster. But we want to work through that.
And so will we have regional Comcast then to broadcast public access like?
Yes, yes, we're currently looking into it.
Thank you.
Yeah, that was kind of where my question was going to, because obviously I know it was a change to now utilize this for city council meetings and planning commissions. But the technology seemed to.
There's been ups and downs.
Uh. And I know that there was the, the change and I believe even though Comcast would be, uh, utilized to that, we still will have channels. As, as we do today, whether it's channel one, et cetera. So, uh, that's still available, but I want to make sure that. You know, is it, uh, worth everything, right? I want, I want to make sure that we're broadcasting, I want to make sure that we're being heard correctly, I want to make sure that. You know, because it was about the mics, so. I guess if we're going to invest this money. My ask is that we do look at the warranty, that we do get it right, and I mean, they get it right, along with us, but. Let's just. Have it finished, done, and delivered it. Any other questions or comments on the presentation? Any public comment?
Yes, Linda Mason would like to provide comment for I M V as well as C.
Good evening, council. Good evening. And I just want to start by thanking Councilmember Martin Medina and Councilmember Alvarez for your guest votes on this new free parking. And reviewing the stack reported on page one twenty seven, I noticed that there's only one expenditure that is going over a budget and that is departmental and that's actually yours, that's the city council's. And it's by a hundred and eight thousand, one hundred and twenty dollars. If I recall correctly from the parking meeting, the amount that it took for Sunday free parking was approximately a hundred thousand dollars. I would highly, highly recommend that whatever is costing you all an extra hundred and eight thousand dollars within your budget, that you apply it to free Sunday parkings for the next year. And that hopefully that. And that hopefully that amount of money can relieve the, uh, business owners and hopefully the pay, bring some patrons back to downtown because in my conversations with many business owners, this is really becoming a real issue. Uh, and then the lack of a number of the, uh, meters and different things working, it's going beyond San Bernardino, it has become a true embarrassment to our city. Um, the second, um, item I wanted to bring up is around the YouTube funds that once again are not included in this budget. Um, you know, when I was on the council, we worked, all of us worked very hard to bring in one-time plans to the city. Uh, off the top of my head, fifty-four million dollars for YouTube, uh, ten million dollars for the Southline project, five million dollars for the sale of the lot in front of Jax. About a million dollars a year for our church shows. That brings in seventy million dollars. And I want to just compare that to the community foundation seventy million dollar P T D package that build what we're standing in right now. To this date, the public has heard nothing about these funds. You might find a mention of it somewhere if you dig into page three hundred and sentence fifty on a page, and that is simply not it enough. Um, there's been no announcement that the fund received, there's been no announcement that these funds have been spent, many of them have been spent. There's the use of funds for purposes of assisting with CityNet and Stormwater. Uh, I don't think those were the intended use of the funds and I would argue that you should probably read the development agreement because there is a definition in there of what community benefits are. Um, and arguably, I think it's not in accordance with the development agreement. And I say arguably because it starts with generally, which we all know can be very general, but I don't think that was the intent. Um, with the community foundation now having about twenty to thirty million dollars and making a determination to wind down. I would hope that the council and the foundation are having conversations about combining those funds that were moved to the general fund from the YouTube money. And, uh, making a true legacy project as opposed to these one-off expenses that the city will truly not be able to spend at the front. So I, I really hope that, um, one, you start actually mentioning these in your reports, so you can comment. Two, you have a listening session because when you combine the seventy million to the community foundation's twenty to thirty million, now you're really talking ninety to a hundred million dollars. And where is all this money going? And where is the public's input on this? And I hope that there's something that comes out of this that is like the rack that we're standing in, because otherwise the legacy you are all leaving is a legacy of nothing. Thank you.
And just, because I know I get asked, uh, yes, the speaker went over the time, but really the speaker was speaking to two items, so I want the speaker to be able to finish, um, and not just state it in three, since it was a combination. Um, any other public comments?
No, the speaker first.
Okay. Any other questions in the presentation? Let's bring it back to, uh, council for liberation or the recommended action on the resolution. That is, that is the issue.
I just have, I just have a few comments on the whole, on all of this. So the, the if we look at five-year forecasts, if we look at the, you know, the, and then operating revenue, you know, dipping into the, dipping into the negative and, you know, obviously, as, as was, as was stated and as happens every year, we, um, staff worked diligently at, at plenty of time to present us with a balanced, balanced budget, even when, uh, the initial projections are per deficit. What it comes down to and we have to think about every time we do anything, uh, sitting up here is, um, on slide eight, we talked about, uh, it was presented the growth factors, the revenue, which is growing at two to five percent while expenditure is going at three and a half percent. And that doesn't seem to be changing at any time soon. It's been the expenditure growth has outpaced revenue growth the entire time I've been here. And I believe in, in, uh, many of the years, uh, prior to, to when I got here. So I just want to make sure that we're all, I mean, obviously we're all aware of that, but that needs to be something that's first and foremost in our minds as we make all of our decisions, that we need to figure out ways to, um, get those together. We don't have a lot, we don't, we have control over expenditures and not making frivolous expenditures. Um, you know, looking at the major budget requests, you know, as, as, um, uh, Councilmember Salazar said, I would think it's here, these are all things, they're all things that are, that are, that are needed. Um, so we have to be focusing on the revenue side and we have, and we have made some strides in this area, the, the, the residents have stepped up. First with measure G and then we'll be seeing the pressure Q and it's great. But, um, it's still, it's still just a, a scratch on the surface of what is, what is needed. So I just, I didn't, I didn't want this item to go by without pointing out that very important. Thank you.
Thank you.
Other, um, Vice Mayor, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to be able to share the question that, uh, Councilman Hamilton sent it that posted and it's regarding why there is this, uh, larger expenditure in the city council. I mean, and it kind of answers with, uh, his nice question, question. Right. Maybe you can answer it. Okay. What, what the story is behind that discrepancy or that higher amount. But it does answer a question that's asked right here tonight, which
If you could, uh, answer that if there's anything else you wanted to add.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and then thank you for the question, Vice Mayor Adina. Um, the, I, I just pulled up the, uh, data for the projection for the city council, but it's also mentioned in the questions that were presented by Councilmember Hamilton. Uh, this was the first year that we voted, uh, the channel one expenditures in the general fund at a hundred thousand dollars. Um, the, uh, at this point it doesn't, while they're shown as expenditures in the, in the, um, in the presentation, at this point I don't anticipate that we're actually going to expand those funds this year. So that will benefit the, that will benefit the, uh, the general fund circles. Um,
Yeah, so that, that answers the question I got, the amount of money that was being referenced, the hundred thousand. It's something that you explained was going to be the channel, channel one expenditure and you're telling us right now that we're not going to expand that. So that money isn't being spent.
For this year, yes.
Correct, okay. And that was an idea to try to kind of put that item there. Enter the city council, it's kind of interesting. I don't know, it's recent, it hasn't happened before this year. We were thinking of doing it and then staff decided not to do it. Just to defend it, is that accurate?
Uh, well, we didn't incur any expense this year.
Okay.
Yeah, it was budgeted, but they, you were focusing on the transfer happening perhaps for the end of this fiscal year. The transfer of CityNet to Comcast before the end of this fiscal year is our original. Or we were last year. And then, uh, Mr. Mayor, if I could just, uh, add, um, there, um, one, the speaker had mentioned the, uh, the That's a little early in the budget process for the voices to start. But there was a, uh, question about the disposition of a variety of revenues that have come over, that have come into town city over the last several years. Um, and I do want to, uh, highlight that if anybody would like to connect and discuss, uh, how the, how we have, uh, how those funds are reflected in our financial statements, um, uh, the, the, uh, the decision that was made to address the negative equity positions in CityNet and Stormwater. Um, the, uh, those funds are there, they are in the general fund and are accessible for future uses. They have not gone away, they have not been spent. Um, but to the extent that anyone is interested in learning more about those, I'm happy to make myself a bit.
Thank you.
Well, just a quick, quick follow-up. That the, the entirety of the money is sitting, we don't know what happened to it, you do know what happened to twenty-one and a half billion dollars. You know, and, and that was not, you know, any kind of secret vote, it was very public and painful, though probably the most painful vote I've taken in this job. Was to take twenty-one and a half million dollars that YouTube money to throw, throw into the hole in CityNet. Um, and that's, that's, again, that's high, that's something that happened very publicly. So, um, I just wanted to point that out. Thank you.
There being no other, um, comments, uh, at this point, uh, any action by council on staff's recommendation? Just to adopt a resolution of any that is here twenty twenty-four, twenty-five, but
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution as we're about to see.
Thank you. Cool. Uh, Hamilton Salazar, uh, to go ahead and approve, all those papers say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, passage five oh. Now we'll move on to items D and City Clerk, if you can, um, read items D and E and we'll take them as combined.
Item D, receive proposed measure Q spending plan and provide direction for incorporation in the fiscal year twenty twenty-five to twenty-six capital implementation program. And item E, receive input from the revenue measure oversight committee and provide direction to include the fiscal year twenty twenty-five to twenty-six measure G revenue spending plan in the city manager's recommended budget.
Yes, it's that. See if I'm
Mr. Mayor, members of council, um, thank, and again, thank you for allowing me to combine, uh, these presentations. Um, this, uh, both the, both the previous presentation and this presentation are very related items, um, uh, the, the, why, the reason why we combined them, um, talking about measure Q without, or measure G without talking about the other seemed incomplete and I'll, and I'll go through that as, as we move forward. So the agenda this evening is that, uh, the council received the proposed, uh, measure Q and measure G spending plans for inclusion in the city manager's recommended budget, which, uh, starts, um, on the capital side, we return at your next meeting with the capital urban program budget presentation. And then we'll continue on through the end of, uh, this fiscal year, the, the, recall of adoption by the end of June. So why, uh, why this particular presentation now and, uh, why are they combined? Uh, so that again, you know, the, the primary focus here is to give staff the information that we need in order to deliver a budget to council that is, um, that is, that, uh, that incorporates measure Q, uh, spending capital infrastructure as well as, uh, measure G spending plan, which is a more routine process that, um, that the city council is, is more familiar with. Um, but in the twenty twenty-four measure Q, it's a new funding source, limited to three different types of infrastructure, stormwater, streets and fire stations. Um, in, uh, two thousand and nineteen, measure G, uh, provided a half cent sales tax that is, uh, funding source for any municipal purpose. Um, and, uh, as I'll walk through a little later, I'll demonstrate that in the past primarily measure G has funded substantially enhanced projects. So for the measure Q proposed spending plan. Um, there are, you've seen this, uh, this, this diagram a couple of times. Uh, there is a very, uh, sequential process necessary to arrive at, at a decision to spend and issue bond funded, or spend or to, uh, issue bonds and then spend those funds on capital projects. Uh, voter approval was of course the first and most important step. And then right now we are in the, uh, phase, sort of midway through the two major pieces of, um, the city council approved budget with, uh, the proposed spending plan. Uh, after this, uh, action, after this evening's, uh, discussion, we will return to council and one of the more, one of the actions that we will be asking you to take at the next meeting is to adopt a reversion resolution and I'll explain. So just, uh, very quickly, uh, this is a valid question for measure Q, uh, very clear that there are three infrastructure items that are authorized uses of this, these funds. Uh, they authorize a general fund or general obligation bonds totaling under two million dollars. We had initially identified that there would be three tranches or three separate issuances of, of the general obligation bonds that start in this or next year and then five, each five years thereafter roughly about thirty-four million dollars per, per tranche. But as we go through the analysis of the work that, uh, as we go through our, I'm sorry, and as we go through our analysis, uh, the, the cash flow and other requirements may not allow for that. Um, we look at the approval. You'll remember that four thousand six hundred and seventy-seven, it's a fun story, fun fact, kind of later in the presentation, remember that number. Um, the, uh, measure Q was approved by, there were seventeen thousand votes roughly that were, that were passed and about seventy-three percent those votes were in favor of measure Q. Uh, as we look at the, as we look at the projects that are eligible and how we, uh, how we are arriving at the proposed spending plan for measure Q, uh, we need to look at a couple of factors. First and, and cleanest is the eligible projects, which projects can we spend these monies on? Um, and it, and it's fairly straightforward, our pavement management programs are all encompassing streets, uh, and possible, uh, repair improvement, uh, projects. Fire station number fifty-two and fifty, fifty-one and fifty-two are eligible projects and then the storm drain system as a whole is an eligible project. Um, the other factor that we looked at when we were, uh, focusing on, uh, developing this, this, the, uh, the spending plan is that there's a very important it's that we are, we have to have reasonable, uh, assurances or be able to certify that, um, within three years of issuing the bonds, we won't spend eighty-five percent of the funds on the subjects, uh, projects. Uh, this puts a, uh, very, this puts a bit of a constraint on how we can, when we issue bonds and how we spend the money, given that, uh, we look at facilities, uh, major facilities, major buildings like the RAP, which took many years to go from con, concept, concept to, uh, actual ribbon cutting and opening, uh, to the public. Uh, and so as we look at the, at the types of projects that we can do, the planning and the design and, uh, whatnot that is required in order to get to that eighty-five percent completion, that has a bearing how the spending plan and the cash flow will play out. And then the final perhaps, uh, and it's sort of equally important component here is our ability, the ability to get to eighty-five percent completion relies on staff and on some consultants and contractors. And, uh, it's, and in order to deliver those, we either have to build up staff internally, build up, uh, talent to manage these projects or, um, or retain, uh, project managers to help move the projects. But the one thing I do want to highlight on the capacity side is we do have vacancies in our public works team, which typically will manage and deliver these projects, uh, to the, uh, to the community. Um, we have vacancies there, but, and, and to add to that, we have a very significant adopted capital improvement program that is, uh, fully subscribed to the available hours and, and resources on the staff side. So as we look at these three elements in, in whole, uh, we come to a, uh, proposed spending plan, our proposed measure Q budget for fiscal year twenty-six. Um, so I'd like to start with, uh, the rev, the sort of resource side, the revenue side, so to speak, uh, where will the monies come from? The monies will come from the issuance of general obligation bonds. Uh, we took a four-year view in our initial, in our initial pass. And what we've identified is that there will be, that, that, uh, in consultation with our financial advisor, the, uh, the bonding capacity available to us can, as I mentioned earlier, we anticipated three issuances of three, of thirty-four million dollars each. Uh, what we are recommending in this particular, uh, spending plan is that rather than, than do one large one now for cash flow purposes, we're recommending that we strictly divide that out and spread that out just a little bit over the four-year timeframe. Uh, so these, the two issuances, one this fiscal year, or this upcoming fiscal year, and then when, uh, the, in four years, we're looking at issuing, uh, a total, um, bond and debt of about four hundred, or forty-five million dollars. So then what will those, what, what will those funds fund? And, uh, And you know, the bonds are need to spend, we need to spend the monies on the projects that are identified. And we have identified three projects, the pavement management program, stormwater, infrastructure and fire station number fifty one. The goal here is that on the pavement management side, that we that, that we have an initial spend in the first two years that is, that allows us to sort of advance the program faster than it would otherwise in the fiscal year twenty six. The recommendation is about nine million dollars for the pavement management program. Stormwater is a longer, is a longer term project. It doesn't have any major, well, million dollars are provided here in the spending plan are for infrastructure improvements. The real sort of multi-jurisdictional regional solutions to some of our, some of our, the flooding issues in the low lying areas. That's, that's several years out. So we don't anticipate that necessarily coming to fruition in the next four years, but in a period beyond that. And then finally prioritizing fire station fifty two for reconstruction. We do have an estimate that we would request funding this year for planning into time. And then I think the ideal would be to break ground at the end of fiscal year twenty seven. With the bulk of the construction happening in fiscal year twenty eight, twenty nine. We do have an initial estimate of twenty four million dollars. However, I do want to caveat that there, that if there's any need for land acquisition or, you know, we don't, we're in a world right now where we don't know if tariffs are going to go up or go down or nonexist or wherever, wherever they may land day to day. We just don't know how those factors will impact any of the spending plan. And, and so, you know, to, to the, to that extent, the twenty four million dollars is very much an estimate. And as we grow this, the project moves forward, then we'll have a better sense of the true cost. So just pulling back a bit. I'm sorry. So what, what the council is being asked to do this evening is to provide direction to staff on measure Q relative to the fiscal year twenty six plan. Measure Q is a little different from measure G in the sense that because it's bonded and it's infrastructure, these are the three projects the council will ultimately identify for funding in our, in the, in the upcoming capital program. So we are committing to funds, whatever that level is, the pavement management program, committing to this, this budget commits to funds for stormwater and fiscal year twenty six. However, with the fire station design will begin in months and I think it's implicit that if we're investing that this amount of money in the design and the, and the planning, that the construction will actually occur. So we're sort of making, we are making a commitment and that one project that is a little more to man to sort of rearrange if we need to in the future. The pavement management program is very flexible. Stormwater also is very flexible. The fire station, on the other hand, once we start the process, we would it, it would support to actually. So to just, to zoom back just a bit, as we look at at the pavement management program, stormwater and the fire, fire station fifty two, wanted to provide the city council with some context as to the various funding sources that are available for these areas. As you'll see from the pavement management program, we have several different funding sources. We have state and counties, state and county taxes that are portioned to the city. We have certainly used measure G funding for those local sales tax for, to support the pavement management program. And new this year, we have the geo bond measure Q. Over the course of four-year plan, we're identifying an investment in the pavement management program of about thirty five hundred million dollars. That, that is a, if we look at the past five years, what we've spent in pavement management, this is almost double that number. And, and I think that as we look at the, the, what was important to, to what was the, the various projects that are in measure Q, pavement management is clearly one of those that, that is receiving a decent amount of funds from the initial four years. Second area I want to focus with is stormwater. Stormwater does not have any other real significant funding sources that can go for capital and councils are fully aware of this. Given the, some of the efforts that has to secure funding for stormwater. I did leave the line for grants and federal grants, really to highlight that the work that we anticipate, the major bond work that we anticipate in stormwater from measure Q will likely be in local match to a federal grant, multi-jurisdictional federal grants time in the future, unlikely in the next four years, but potentially in the four years subsequent. And so that federal grant is essential or critical to give up to delivering some of these larger projects and measure Q gives us a resource and the ability to actually have a local man to take advantage of those grant funds. As I discussed earlier, fire station fifty two, estimated budget of about twenty four million dollars. That's an estimate as of today and I already sort of gone through the various factors there. Similar to what we, what we discussed in the previous slide, the council is being asked to provide direction on the fiscal year twenty six spending plan. And so this slide is a little more, has, has more, is a little more dynamic than the last slide in the sense that if we look at the pavement management program, combined with the other, read some of the other revenue sources. This spending plan in conjunction with, as part of the CIP process would identify eleven million dollars for the PMP in fiscal year twenty six. And then the other two, we already talked about, the stormwater and fire station, we talked about. So I'd like to move on to the measure G proposed spending plan. Just for some backgrounds, the ballot measure has a number of examples of city services and facilities that are eligible for uses. When we met with the, with the revenue measure oversight committee, and I'll just call it the measure G committee from here on out, when we met with the measure G committee, one of the elements that as part of the discussion was whether the proposed spending plan that staff has had recommended or is recommending to council, you know, sort of falls in the general under these general areas that have been identified, even though the funding could be used for, for any municipal service. If you remember, if you recall, I asked you to remember the forty six seventy seven. I had to double check this several times because I just couldn't believe it, but measure Q, the no vote was four thousand six hundred seventy seven. Measure G, the yes vote was four thousand six hundred seventy seven. Just a fun fact. And that's as funny as I can be, so. See here. So for the two thousand nineteen measure G, we already talked about its purpose. It is a, we estimate between three and a half and four million dollars per year and has some sales tax. This number, if you look at the ballot measure, estimated a revenue of about four million dollars a year, which is pretty much on point with what we actually received for the most part. However, we are seeing some changes in, well, we have a major retailer that is no longer, no longer be in town this summer. We have a mall that is processed or redeveloping and so we're estimating on the lower end about three point five billion for measure G. Just to recap the appropriations over the last five years, you'll see that pavement management over the, over the last five years, their measure G has generated about nineteen point one million dollars. We have appropriated, or the council has appropriated in the past sort of last five years, fifteen million dollars, which is just about seventy eight percent of the total measure G revenue. The other, the second largest was a two million dollar transfer in, I believe it was twenty one, fiscal year twenty one to maintain services during the COVID emergency and then there have been minor investments in other areas. So as I mentioned earlier, we, staff proposed the spending plan to the revenue measure oversight committee at their, and at their meeting on two thirteen. The committee fulfills their obligation under their, under their bylaws to provide feedback to council on the on the staff's recommended allocation of measure G. And then we're transmitting that to you this evening. So staff presented the committee with a spending plan that focused a couple of areas. Forty eight million dollar spending plan, about fifty percent of that number is identified. About fifty percent of that is, is identified. The, the, the foundation of the spending plan was really to fund the city council's top priority initiatives, which were decided at the, which were voted on in early February by council. There were five initiatives, the community communications, community communications and engagement program, mitigation of illegal dumping, the RPPP, retro, the ROY phase two, and then strategic analysis of city owned properties. For several of these projects, these would typically be funded out of the general fund. However, given the investments that we anticipated making to the city, or the recommendation we anticipated making to the city council in measure Q, which understandably for the measure G committee, we couldn't share that information because we haven't presented it to council yet. But in anticipation of the, of the level of funding recommended for measure Q on the path pavement management program, staff felt that this, that these purposes, these uses are in line with the eligible uses for measure G. In addition to the council's, council priorities, additional funds for wildfire mitigation, which measure G has historically provided some contribution to that effort. Enhancing, filling the gap that was created in in the difference between revenues and expenditures for the education, for enforcement and education on the July fourth holiday. The, just for a quick summary, the city had historically recovered a hundred percent of its costs from the booth operators, however, through our discussions and fee schedule discussions last year. The, the staff, staff recommended the council adopt a reimbursement policy that does not fully recover the costs for the program. And that was a collaborative effort with the, with the operators based on various laws that are, that are, that are in place regarding city recovery costs. But there is a dollar amount that will need to be backfilled using some city funds, whether it be measure G or the general fund. And I would say that the police, that, that we have not started the process of working at the lease on developing that education and outreach campaign. It typically happens in the next month or so. And so we will be working on that and this number will change. And then finally, recommendation to create a community event program that allows, that provides for funding for various community events organized by service groups as well as nonprofits. Of this, I, I do want to highlight that about fifty percent of the funding is for the RO street light phase two project. Thirty five percent of the funding are about one point two million dollars maintains or enhances current services and then about half a million or fifteen percent are for, is for the studies, the RPPP, RPPP and the city owned. So I've shared with you the, this forward-looking CIP project funding. And I wanted to provide the context to how measure G fits into PMP specifically. The recommendation again is that the fiscal year twenty six PMP is funded at eleven million dollars through a variety of sources, not measure G funding. And then as we go forward into future years, measure G supporting as well as measure Q supporting the PMP. Again, that gets us to about a thirty five million dollar investment in, in streets for your process, for your period. Just want to highlight that the council this evening is not making a decision about fiscal years twenty seven, twenty eight or twenty nine, particularly with regard to measure G, we're only asking the council to make a decision this evening and or to provide guidance this evening on fiscal year twenty six. So for the vote from the measure G committee, the vote was three to two, three in favor, two, two against the that in, was three were in favor of concurring that the recommended, with the recommended spending plan as, as was shown earlier. The committee had an extensive conversation about the uses of measure G and identified some caveats, saying, and they're, they're more articulate in the staff report. I think they're more articulate in the staff report, I'll do my best. But the, one of the discussions that the committee reached consensus on was the voter intent to measure G. And the committee was very, was very clear and again, reached consensus that measure G, the, the understanding of voter intent was that that would go to street resurfacing, the street improvement projects. The other caveat that the committee had asked that the, that staff bring to council is that the, while there, while there may not, while there was a split vote or not split vote, but a three-two vote on concurrence with the recommendation, the committee was felt very strongly that we communicate that the council maintained funding for a robust pavement management program in fiscal year twenty twenty six and a very, a variety of resources, the measure Q was identified as one of those options. So in, I, I, I hope that through this presentation, we've sort of walked through the various relationships between the two funding sources, measure G and measure Q. I hope that the spending plan that was identified for measure Q and measure G in fiscal year twenty six is something the council can move forward and providing direction to us for inclusion in the budget. Again, the, the PMP program would be two point, I'm sorry, eleven million dollars in fiscal year twenty six. With respect to next steps, we're in, we're in the throes of budget and I will eventually probably sort their voices around April twenty second. But on, on your next meeting, it's a, there are two significant items. One, very important administrative item first is that we will ask the council to adopt the measure Q reimbursement resolution, which allows us to encourage expenditures related to the CIP and reimburse those expenditures using bond proceeds when the bonds are issued. The second, and the reason we are seeking your guidance tonight is we will also have the CIP preview, which is a preview of what will be presented to council in your final, in the city manager's recommended budget. Measure, measure Q plays an instrumental role in that. And then on the administrative side, our energy policy updates. So just to sort of pull it all together, measure Q and measure, measure G, the recommended budgets for measure Q. We're recommending a twelve million dollar expenditure in fiscal year twenty six for measure Q with nine million dollars of that going to pavement management program, one million to stormwater and then two millions to fire station fifty two. And then on the measure G spending plan, a total of three point, roughly three point five million dollars funding a variety of projects and services. So with that, I am happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much for the information and the reports. Questions on the presentation? To our CFO, Councilmember Salazar, I'll take that.
Okay, yeah, I do have a few questions. So
In looking at these tables and projected spending over the years, what's what is our actual annual estimated need for storm drains? I think at one point we had estimated there was an ongoing annual deficit that I believe was connected to a lot per year. Had your.
Sorry, members of council, my name is Natalie, Public Works Director. The question that we are asking is what was the deficit for our storm water fund over the past few years? I think we recently passed one or two fiscal years started to go into a deficit. And it was an operating deficit of order magnitude of about a million dollars. We did ask through the franchise agreement with the quality when we negotiated, was able to funds be applied for street sweeping, and I think that offset some costs. There is still deficit, but the exact numbers would be right now.
Would it be accurate to say though that the the million dollars that that we were contributing from the general fund to storm was to address immediate urgent need, but not necessarily proactively maintaining the system? And what I'm really trying to get at is we if if so, a million dollars would definitely help them. It would help us not go from the general fund, but if it was two million dollars, could it be invested in moving our storm drain capacity?
To answer that question, the start kind of asking your first round of questioning. The very complex project was to pay for prior thing, prior to things, some of which were emergency repairs. I think it was quarter batch, possibly two hundred to about three to twenty thousand a year for past couple of years. And those when those repairs emergencies are enacted, we need to fund those to to pay for them. That's just to fix the need. Any additional funds for infrastructure will be recovered only because we have deferred maintenance and water infrastructure for for many, many years. And any any investment would help. Now, in terms of, I want to be very specific about what would expand our capacity. Extending our capacities, and I'm probably taking one in like the lead to another here. But to fix the conditions, some of our pipes, not all, but some of our pipes, any dollar amounts will help. A prime example is from the last large storm in twenty twenty-three, where we had the single on the church of Highlands, which is a city owned storm drain five fronts, sort of count trice that property. That repair alone came into the order of active about a million dollars on its own. And that was something that because of deferred maintenance and the fact that we don't see the pipes because they're underground. At some point, the defermentance becomes repaired and that maintenance is always and why is there investment that actual repair, especially when you don't need it?
Thank you. And then that's what I was getting at, trying to set up an understanding of what our true need is if we want it to be correct and the system versus what we're proposing here, which is really just a continuation of sort of as needed maintenance. Similar question on pavement, eleven million is probably a year definitely help. But I believe the number that we had wanting to get up to a really good index was far more than that per year.
Director, so with the pavement maintenance program, there's there's variety indexes, right? To get to, let's just say, hundred, I think the number we drew up there was very significant, I believe. Amount that we're investing in in the upcoming year, if we can sustain is kind of way out that director, Guderos can provide one of us for the next couple of years, we have the abilities to help reset it next a little bit, which is kind of the goal. I think we all love to get student and get to a hundred, but we're kind of grading on the curve. So any incremental improvement over time is is really what we want to do because we didn't get to that PCI decks in a year, so we're not going to be able to get out of it in a year as low, it just takes that level of investment is very similar to what we're doing. But these projects have a very threshold that we begin to invest, began began to invest in before that hit go.
Okay, thank you. And and again, something I want to just sort of baseline there is that while while we are talking about getting to an average PCI across the city, there are still a number of streets that are just abysmal. And unless we have extra revenue to address those, we'll never get to them. Okay, so I believe the public would be interested in seeing some of those other projects eventually addressed, and I don't think we'll get there just chasing sort of steady state across the and and I understand all the reasons why we do that, but this sort of again, setting a sort of a baseline for what we're actually talking about accomplishing versus what maybe the public's interest in and seeing. Along the same lines, so once we make a commitment on what we're going to do for the twenty twenty-six measure Q investment, is there still flexibility adding additional programs that are still capital programs? Or are we sort of locked into the three that were listed?
Thank you, Councilmember Salazar, the we are, we are very limited to storm water pavement, pavement effectively and fire stations. Those are the only capital improvements that we can that measure Q funds can be used for. The the way the reimbursement resolution being burdened in consultation with bond councils, we will have flexibility within those three categories for the first and second tranche. We're not specifically identifying, you know, a storm drain on, let's just say, on Sandberg Avenue. We're not getting to that level of granularity, it'll just say storm. I believe the the language will be storm drain improvements, and we have flexibility with that. We also have flexibility with the general allocation of how the funds are relocated.
So we can adjust what would get spent each of those categories along with state of different categories. That's my understanding, yes. And regarding the fire station, the community foundation stated an interest in contributing to a partnership project, which could be the fire station. If we were to factor in a contribution from the community foundation, would it impact what we're talking about today in terms of what committing to in that first tranche being that we need to spend it within a timeframe? So if that if there was an extra infusion of cash, would it then sort of upset what we can do? Or could we just easily distribute whatever money we get from the community foundation to offset the fire station and move that into the category?
So the reimbursement resolution is the first, well, the reimbursement resolution is the first step that that happened. That'll hopefully happen at the next council meeting. The sort of how the final spending plan works for the first tranche of lawns, that decision probably won't be made until later in this calendar year for initiations. Usually, I think it's about a four month process for initiations. And so we when we there's some time to sort of figure out the various uses of these funds and how they're allocated to different projects.
Yeah, this is like there would be, if we do want to go that route, it seems like we may want to make a commitment to the community foundation if we're if we're interested in establishing a partnership before they go in a different direction. So if they're they're offering, I think it will be in our interest. I think that was in your questions.
I was, yes, I was teed up next and the council members are asking questions. I asked my question, I have the exact same question because I do recall that, you know, we were that we had it when we entered the 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 storm water fund going underwater unintended that the that was a that was just sort of a million dollars a year that some of that was offset by the agreement with the policy for street sweeping, but generally it was a million dollars a year. And then when you look at this, it looks like, okay, well, we're just maintaining that. And yes, it's great that we're not paying it out of the general fund, but I think what they I guess maybe I'll I'll defer my comments on it until we get into the deliberation part because the question that's been answered, I appreciate that, thanks. I'll just hold on.
Councilmember Alvarez and Vice President Nina.
Mr. Mayor, on page one forty-four of the report, it was noted that there is a thirty, eighty-five percent completion requirement in thirty-six months, given that it's anticipated effort for the fire station that is anticipated to cost twenty-four million for construction. And the allotted amount was only in in thirty thirty-six months was only for thirty-five million. Would that be sufficient to reach the eighty-five percent completion in the twenty-four million?
Well, thank you, Councilmember Alvarez, I believe the question is with with regard to the second tranche of bond issuance in fiscal year twenty-nine. With the spending plan, the way it exists, will we achieve the eighty-five percent threshold? And the answer is yes. The way that the way it's laid out here, the answer is yes.
Thank you.
That's the item. Your question is the one that worries me the most because I'm going to have to sign the note to the bond bondholders that we're going to spend this money. We're going to get reach to eighty-five percent in three years.
If ever we're going to be short, Councilmember Salazar initiated that that the fund that will be coming from from the Sandberg Foundation, it's just eighty-five percent from the twenty-four million. I'm just worried that we're not going to be, we're not going to meet the eighty-five percent completion. And we are two million to start the design process and the permitting cost of the construction.
Yes, Councilmember Alvarez, that is a, that's one of the reasons that we're here this evening to present the four year sort of plan. As I mentioned earlier, we will receive a tremendous amount of information as we go through the planning and design phase for the fire station. The understanding of the land and its location will also be an important piece. We, with respect to the foundations of funds, there is not the eighty-five percent completion or there. And if 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 the council and if the if the foundation funds proportion of fire station fifty-two, there is not the eighty-five percent completion or their contribution, it's only for the bond funds.
Thank you.
Thanks, Senator.
Yes, thank you for the presentation and really interesting work. Anderson, tonight we're dealing specifically with the budget for next year. My concern is the amount of bond for the issue twenty twenty-seven, that the amount of paving that is significantly less. And I can call specifically the the target number was twelve million a year. If we had twelve million a year in the presentation, we don't think it's worth it. So that's kind of the number I've been thinking for quite a while and we can bring it out. Slides up on Director Guderos that shows the layout of the pavement ground. Going forward, what it basically comes down to is I don't think seventeen and a half million is enough. So I know we're dealing with twenty twenty-six, but at some point we're going to issue the bonds and I think a lot of this tension there. Tell the board what else to see what they can. So next year's going to be great. Doing twelve million dollars work, I think we did about eleven million, approximately eleven million dollars shooting. And going forward, that's the kind of pace I think that we need to be looking at. Of course, we were able to do it this year, we're short on staff, but paving, you spend a lot of money on paving once it starts, you grind it and you lay out the pavement and it gets done in a couple of weeks. For the paving part of it, not coming to the sidewalk, the other big outlook acres. But if we're looking at this right here, we're at eleven million and then it goes down to seven point six. Ask, so it's been averaging, I guess, price increases around nine percent. So this doesn't account for any inflation. And so we're actually spending a lot of money, it's going to be less and it's going to buy us less. And we all know that in streets, the longer you don't maintain it, the more expensive it costs as it degrades and to the need for rebuild of the road. So and I don't know if this is a perfect time to talk about the bonds, but I'm fine with proceeding with this amount for twenty twenty-six. But my concern for paving going forward is that we're not spending enough. My question about storm water is I want to first verify that the bond proceeds can only be used for infrastructure, not operations. So we had an operating deficit previously, and then we did some things to kind of make it better with the recology street sweeping part. So specifically, are we are we slip lining? We have a list of projects that we think we're going to do. And it's great that we have a million dollars that fill in a gap for emergency repair, but it's really not taking control of the improvement of our storm drain system. And it's in the tens of millions of dollars, the upgrades that are needed and we're receiving. Looking forward, this is interesting, what are we going to plan to do? You know, is there list of projects? I don't really know. I know we have a storm master, storm water master plan that's outdated and we need to update it. But of the items that are on that storm water master plan, are we? We didn't do everything for that, but what on the list should be shown and paid for through our bond? Sir, that we're doing. So so that's my my question is, I don't think we have enough. And I'm, I don't think a million is enough for the first year. I don't think that the amount of issues of bonds of the seventeen and a half million is not enough to cover for the next three years. Nonetheless, so saying all that, I'm I'm okay with proceeding for this first year, but we can say that we're going to deal with the first year and we're only going to issue seventy and a half million dollars of bonds. I wanted to get very clear that I think we need it more. We need to have more specifics in our storm water. We have a, we have an ability hopefully to work out something separate from the foundation for the fire station, which would be great. And where where that money goes can go to more streets, it can go to more storm water. But I think we need to have a bigger discussion on the status and the needs in our storm water system and start addressing it. I know that we have a pump station instead of that. Once one shoreline is looking at funds, apparently we have nine, almost a million dollars federal funds, I believe, to pay for the upgrade, but what is like, are we required to match any money from the pump station? I don't have an answer to that question, but a million isn't isn't going to do much. It's going to fix a couple of repairs, emergency repairs, and we're still going to have the whole degrading sort of, so I want to get that out. So the question is, I guess, it is both is is I want staff to be able to respond to my points that it sounds like it's not enough. And I'm sure that I'm guessing, I don't know, I just want to hear from you, this is an open discussion, I want to.
Well, and I was trying to get questions on the presentation and then come back to discussion, deliberation.
I also want to hear, all right, you know what? I can wait for that. I can wait for that. I already fed that out there. It's coming. So ready to make a discussion.
Got it, yes.
In that no prayer. You won't, could you pass um, could you pass the mic? Uh, at this time, we'll take public comment. And again, on the full items will be coupled together. So please go ahead.
With the following members on public, please approach the podium, Don Gregory, followed by Frank Edley, followed by Linda Mason.
And councilmembers and members of the public. I'm Dawn Gregory, chairperson of the Revenue Measure Oversight Committee for Measure G. Um, I think you've gone over a lot of things tonight um that that I was concerned about. Uh, so maybe this will be a better repetition. But uh, the committee has decided that we want some members to speak tonight on behalf of the Measure G funding. Uh, so at Measure G's February thirteenth meeting, the city staff's recommended projects based on the unapproved city council top priority initiative did not include street paving. The recommended projects instead were a variety of programs for community communications, mitigation of illegal dumping, residential parking permit program, retrofit of the R O streets, streetlight system, wildfire mitigation, Fourth of July education and enforcement and community events, but no street paving funds. The reasoning for funding these programs and not street paving was that forthcoming Measure Q bond funds would be used towards the street paving program. However, at the time of the Measure G meeting on February thirteenth, the Measure Q funds for street paving had not yet been approved by city council. Recommended Measure Q matters are before city council and tonight's agenda. So Measure G committee members were apprehensive about approving Measure G requests prior to having assurance that street paving projects would be approved for fiscal year twenty-six through Measure Q. Basically, the cart came before the horse and we were a bit apprehensive about um about committing um the um funds uh for for fiscal year twenty-six without knowing what um what was going to be happening with uh Measure Q. The Measure G committee ultimately voted three to two to approve the staff recommendations, meaning no Measure G funds were allocated for street paving. I'm relieved tonight to see that this meeting's staff report requests Measure Q allotment for street paving of nine million dollars. So I'm therefore recommending that the city council take under consideration the proposed Measure Q street paving expenditure of nine million dollars. Otherwise, Measure G needs to have a reallocation of the um funding priorities that we discussed at the February thirteenth meeting. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please.
So during current council meetings, they're always enlightening. Uh, they are. You guys are honestly uh, we're among enough to know that it's a challenge and a half. And at our Measure G meeting, Nick had a real problem trying to explain the integration of Measure O or Q and Measure A. And I'm going, did not thoroughly understand how all that was gonna look out. But he did work it out, along with Alec, everybody else that worked on it. Um, our our role, I speak from two, one as a member of the committee and as a citizen of the center of the endorsed Measure A. So um Measure A, the Measure G, um the Oversight Committee has a basic responsibility and that is to be a guide, guide rails to ensure that the sales tax that's received is being allocated pursuant to the dictates of the markets. That I can say, I recognize that night, yes, we can. Those are allocated are opportunities to allocate funds in other areas. What we cannot have cleared, as our chairperson said, was how much allocation would be made in what form uh it would be made. Reading this completed staff report, I give a much better picture of where it's at. And with that in mind, uh, I think if we'd had all of that, the vote probably would have been three to two. I can't speak for the others, but we would have had a better handle had we been able to see the layout. I guess fundamentally, what we care about is that the sales tax received priority should be directed to payment approved. But I understand the limitations that for you too. And with that in I think the layout staff is presenting to you is a positive one for this year. And it incorporates all of the monies that we would otherwise be extending from the but you can't spend all that money having make a payment of Measure G without uh having an emphasis on the payment. Payment management program to Measure Q is being adequately addressed. It's the private view, the decision to move forward with that allocation this year. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please.
Again, council, I just want to start by thanking the Measure G committee for coming out and speaking about their concerns regarding the allocation or reallocation of the Measure G funds for paving. Um, I think it's important that the committee members all take their volunteer role so seriously. Uh, I am concerned that the advertisements from Measure G that were approved um did specifically refer to paving as one of the number one needs. Um, and you know, and if you ever call, it would be splashy, yellow glossy, um, nailing type pain to all of us. So um, there's significant work to be done throughout the city, both with paving um and with uh all the needs under Measure Q. I would just like to see that some Measure G funds are always allocated to paving because I think had it not been for paving, Measure G would not have been approved. And uh, and you started to dilute the public's trust when you don't use the funds for what they were advertised for, understanding that legally they could be used uh for a myriad of different things. Um, but the public's um vote was often and is often based on what is advertised to them, which was paving. So I would hope that in the future that's considered, even if it's not the full amount of Measure G funds. Um, I also just wanted to thank whoever prepared the notice tonight. Um, because the finally, because it was clear in the notice tonight that Measure G was gonna be discussed, that Measure Q was going to be discussed. I provided for the public with a meaningful opportunity to come and comment. Unlike that February twenty-seven, two thousand twenty-four meeting that council member Hamilton referred to, that did not mention the movement of twenty-three point six million dollars or the E two community benefits in the notice. Um, and you had to actually go into the staff page to page seventy-two of eighty-two pages, read down to line sixteen to even see the words E two or Google. So I hope that in the future we have more opportunities for meaningful conversations. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Are there any other public speakers? Is there anybody in the audience that has had an opportunity? Because once we bring it back, we're okay, back to council uh for now comments, et cetera.
I think so, um, the, you know, I started talking about just the stormwater I am. Um, for well, I guess first of all, just to address our our um measure, our Measure G committee members, thank you for, thank you for coming. And um, I completely understand your, the, what happened. It was and I I had a discussion with the city manager that I felt that things were kind of going a little out of order. Like, uh, because, you know, of course, as we look, as we have all um been saying ever since we formed the committee and and that, you know, the primary usage and we see it seventy-eight percent of the of the money that for uh Measure G is being is for paving. Um, being asked to make a recommendation, not knowing what the Measure Q piece of it was going to be, I'm sure was 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 uh was difficult. So hopefully we can take that as a learning um learning moment for the for the future. Uh, I am, you know, speaking for myself, I am committed to um allocating the Measure Q for paving because it's obviously, obviously needed. Um, looking at the stormwater piece, however, I am concerned that the um it's similar to the this conversation we're having about, you know, how Measure G was was presented to the to the public. Um, Measure Q was presented to the public um very heavy on the stormwater and you know, we know that the the history of our of of us trying to get the the stormwater enterprise to be self-sustaining. You know, we had a um, we had a property owner election back in twenty-one that was a catastrophic failure. Um, but then we had a couple of really bad winters right after that. And we had flooding, you know, in all places that we usually get flooding. And we have flooding in places that we don't usually get flooding, flooding. We have uh have failed stormwater pipe and flooding on Sneak Lane. And I I truly do believe that that had a significant impact on the very large margin by which uh Measure Q was passed. So given all of that, I am concerned that the level of funding for stormwater for our Measure Q is not high enough. And I know we have competing needs. Um, and you know, we do need to, we do need to fund the payment management program. We desperately need to fund the uh the new fire station. What I would like to see is if we, as as was mentioned earlier, if we enter into a partnership with the community foundation for the fire station. Um, if those, if that two million dollars in funds for doing the initial design and all of that in fiscal year twenty-six could be um offset with funding from the community foundation, I would advocate for those two of that two million dollars to go into stormwater. Cause that's that's where I I we have strong needs there. There's hundreds of millions of dollars in infrastructure needs and stormwater that we've um, that we've been discussing. And um, we need to start getting after it because as with everything, the longer you, the longer you wait, the more we're gonna pay.
So I wanted to start by saying that um, you know, public trust is is fragile. This has been difficult for the council to earn the trust of the community to the point where we're able to have these two new um funding sources to help us with our projects. But it is uh very easy to lose that trust if we don't uh maintain and protect this. We've uh over the years sort of held the line on uh the uses for for Measure G. And I think we need to continue doing it to to maintain that trust. Um in in terms of what we're looking at uh on the Measure G side, uh, I appreciate the the committee being here to uh give us their opinions and supporting staff's recommendations, but I do believe that there are some things on there that uh need to be reconsidered. Um, in favor of doing things that are critical, uh, including the uh street lighting project, uh, the illegal dumping, which I think is a very uh urgent uh of of community uh need and also the the wildfire mitigation and the other items that were listed on there are the uh, we we need to reconsider. I know that they're all from our our list of priorities, but um I think for at least for myself, uh, seeing a dollar number associated with them and having to make a decision on whether we fund it gives me a pause and uh, I think we need to reconsider um if those are still going to be priorities for us, uh, what amount of expenditure we want to make on those individual items. And uh, how we uh, how we want to pay for them. I don't think that putting them on Measure G is appropriate. Especially in life, I think we all agree that uh the amount of funding, uh, the amount of investment that we need to make in both storm and paving is uh is significant and we need to make sure that we're continuing that that commitment. Uh, also regarding uh, you know, the the uh that offered from the community foundation, I really feel we need to uh quickly on that to make sure that we're including uh or finalizing the details of what they might be willing to contribute and make sure that we're factoring that in and that allows us to make those commitments to both uh stormwater and paving. And I think uh that would give us a better picture of where we stand and I think it would uh make it make me feel a lot better about uh the amount of commitment and way we would make.
Thank you. Other comments?
Yes, uh, I wanted to thank the Measure G committee being here. I also did watch the meeting. I did see the struggle with the unknowns that were out there and how did that, did Measure G, yes, check the box that it could be, it could be used on everything, but it wasn't how it was advertised and I appreciated the discomfort honestly that that you had while you were discussing it like. I think you did a very good job on it and similar to Councilman Salazar. And for the record, the council had their number of initiatives. Voter, we provided those initiatives to our city manager and the city manager funded the the amount of funds that needed to, as a first phase, it was an approved number. And some of that gives me heartburn of, as I believe as Councilman Salazar said, it's like, yeah, okay, I I do, I did vote for majority of those, not all of those initiatives, but I didn't know what the price was gonna be. Right? So um, but there, I it's unfair. I I I don't know if we're gonna go through and how we're gonna vote to approve this because uh, there are some things that I I believe from the market group were saying, yes, I want to do that or maybe there's there's still allowances or maybe the amount will be less. Um, so um acknowledging, change of subject a little bit, so acknowledging that the city has so many needs and old city like ours that we finally have additional revenue to fix the most pressing things. Of course, got a great, you know, certainty from the center of community foundation to say, yes, we're gonna, they're gonna partner with us. And then that means we could spend less on fire station, spend more on streets. Spend more on the storm drain and other needs that make your city. So um Mr. Mayor, I'm one of the bastards and credit girl, or I could disclose it, say it, this is the military. Yeah, for for G, the certain guests for me are the the streetlight system, um, the wildfire mitigation. Um, I think the other things with additional details, I I will be in support of those. And then some, I'm not really sure, but the enhanced enhanced education in person for the Fourth of July, wanted to see more of the detail. Over the years, we did get after the money was spent with budgets and in the last couple of years, I think the question did go up significantly. So we're trying to figure out, is that the right amount and perhaps it shouldn't be in the measure. Uh, I think it's, but it's spoken too much. I just want to figure out how we're gonna go ahead and and decide out of this list. And there's the question for staff on this list is, these are preliminary budgets. And so at some, at what point would the council be able to have a full discussion on each of the different items and how it's gonna be?
Okay, uh, before we get to that, then I'm just I'll put some my comments and we'll try to take the next step. Do you also want to thank Measure G, I uh Oversight Committee, I did watch the meeting as well and uh I thank you because it's a good, robust discussion, but it's also, you know, you're volunteering of your time uh to ensure to the voters that there is an oversight and that how these funds are being spent. The past measure, in the past, Measure G has also had proposals brought before them for staffing. It's an prior, the city manager, not, I don't want to, then it's not, it's not the current. But but Measure G committee said, we're not okay. We can't recommend that. It said, came back to council and the council concurred. So we do listen and I think you take that role uh seriously and responsibly. Um, and as far as with the uh, the community foundation, they have stepped forward to the podium, the president, and said To the podium, the president and said, we want to have another legacy project. We want to partner. They've already said they want to. And I say that we should step forward. With that on the fire station and work as another partner as we sit in this building. And I think we know that the end result will be positive for the community way beyond our time. What I also, which goes to the vice mayor's question is, you know, I look at some of these, you know, fire mitigation, of course, the R O S, the street lights. One of the members who I saw earlier in the month on the Measure G who's not here said, you know, on the residential parking permit program assessment, I I can give it to you real quick for real G. Too many cars, not enough space, spaces, none. Now, if you're going to spend money to say how to solve the solution, how what the solution will be, because I think we know the problem. When we start talking about enhanced education enforcement for the Fourth of July holiday, which is. Because of the safe and sane fireworks that have been approved by the voters. That's what it is. But now, as you know, the city or may know, the city only receives several percent, not what it did. That therefore that means. The taxpayers, the people of this community are subsidizing the safe and sane fireworks sales. If we keep at current staffing levels. So that means we are subsidizing for good intention groups and organizations to fundraise, to make money. So I'm having a concern with that and the community event grant program. I'm also having that, but I also know on the other hand, staff will say, well, that's fine. Move it from here, move it there. That just adds to the deficit. So it doesn't resolve the problem. I move it. If if there's still a request for way of fee of fees. And if we continue the safe and sane fireworks, which was a voter initiative, so it would have to be reexamined by them. So I'm having a little concern on that. So I'll I'll leave it there for right now, but I think it's kind of on a level where you were saying a little bit. I don't know that we're going to be able to drill into the right wall exactly how much is it going to be and when does it come back? And I think I want to ask. CFO or the city manager of the vice mayor's question because it's almost like a study session. Every item the analyzed and bringing it back. And I know there we're looking for not a decision, but a direction. City manager.
Thank you a lot. Lots of impact here, so bear with me. I've said this before and I'll say it again. I'll say you'll hear me say this many, many times. You guys are facing a good problem. Measure Q is a good problem to try to figure out. And to the vice mayor's comments earlier, there's not enough money. There's never going to be enough money. This has been a perennial problem for most cities I've worked in. There's just not enough money, but Measure Q is a great start. So what I cast the CFO with and what we've worked with together was trying to figure out. How do we start putting money forward? And I know I've spoken to all five of you about this privately. How do we move this forward so that the voters who approve this? Feel like we are addressing their needs. One of the biggest challenges, the fire station, it's not a criticism of the fire station. It just costs a lot of money all at once, right? The streets and roads, you throw a hundred million dollars at that. Can't throw a hundred million dollars right next year, but for the sake of argument, you could, but we can't pull that off. We're spreading it out over time because we can. The stormwater system, the same thing, we're spreading it out over time because we can. The fire station is just a T F to a build and then we'll, you know, take it back down again. We kind of what we get here with the rack. So it's a good problem to have. I knew this is exactly what we're going to turn into tonight. Measure G, Measure Q, general fund and the foundation. I did. We had a foundation meeting. I met the foundation executive director and president today. And they have once again reiterated the request. We want another legacy project. I just brought the letter with me tonight. I mentioned this will likely their their suggestion or offer will probably get woven into the conversation. The only caveat I will ask of the council and the mayor's already say this a few times already is. Don't look to the foundation idea as fixing the problem today. Think long term legacy. Right? Doing more streets and roads is not a long term legacy. Building something like this as a legacy, replacing a fire station. May or may not be a legacy. We're replacing it. We're not building a new one. So I just I just want to frame that for the for the council's consideration. The foundation has formed a subcommittee. Of its board to work with, I will say, the city and probably what I would like to do is maybe. Ask the mayor to form a subcommittee to counsel to maybe work with the subcommittee of the foundation to figure out what is that legacy project going to be? They have something like nineteen million dollars, which is certainly a generous offer and be certainly very welcome to offer. But what's that going to get us, right? The fire station, Nick and the fire chief have, excuse me, CFO and the fire chief have both indicated to run a twenty four million dollar project. But one thing Nick said, it does not include land acquisition. Now, we have land, fifty two is sitting on, we're thinking of buying land at the corner of San Bruno Avenue and Glendale. And is that is that a clean swap? We don't know. That's why we're doing the appraisals right now. But there may be some extra money we may need for that as well. So the fire station number, it won't be twenty four million. We just don't know exactly what it's going to be. It's in an order of that, right? You do have a general fund shortfall. That's why exactly why we presented the general fund forecast to you tonight is all of this has to work together. It's my job, it's Nick's job to figure out how do we turn the knobs to get this thing to balance? What we need from you tonight and over the course of the next couple of months is. Where do you want to make your priority investments? What's going to make the most sense? This is council decision at the end of the day, very, very, very clearly. As a reminder, when we came to you in January with your goal setting, you came up with five initiatives of which. You know, as you've already reminded me, I didn't get three of mine. So you guys put three more on the table, which we were not ready to necessarily absorb into the budget or figure out how to how to pay for it. The biggest one you had is the R O S streetlights. That was not a recommended one from the city manager's office at the time because it's a one point eight billion dollar problem. Right? A question we could put to you is do you string, no pun intended, but you string that oil, you string a replacement out over time. There may be reasons to do it. There may be reasons not to do it, but those are the kinds of questions about cash flow. We just have to make sure we understand. Sorry, what's the name of the question? Yes, so. My hope is you can get through tonight. I don't want you to revisit your five initiatives because you've already voted on those. What we're going to do is we're going to bring those back in in fuller form. We're going to we're going to better describe these to you. And at the time we bring these back, it'll probably be the second meeting in April. You guys can say that's not what we want or scale this back more or do more. I mean, you always have that right to do so. But the five initiatives to remind you all. Our direction to me to fund them. My job is to fund them for you because that's what you've asked us to do. On February eleventh, we did show you some general estimated costs and those will be flying over time. So we will be able to sort of give you several more bites at this, but I really don't want you to do is. Is necessarily back off the five initiatives because you thought those were good ideas at the time. And I still think they are. So that was a matter of you casting us to figure out how to pay for them. We may pay for them over time. We may not do them all at once. I kind of I apologize about who made the the quip about the R P P P. I mean, so was the mayor going to make the quip? I mean, yeah, that might be a study of yet. Too many cars on the parking places. We know that's the problem. The question is, we don't know the answer. We have an R P P P in place right now. That doesn't work. So the council's task is to say, what's going to make it? That's what the study is because I don't think staff knows what's going to make it exactly. So I I think you have a lot in front of you right now. This is, believe it or not, the simple part. The rest of the budget coming your way is is the bigger animal to the bigger net the crab. So what we're hoping for you tonight, and I mentioned to the mayor earlier today, is working through probably Measure G first. And then Measure Q. Get get to Measure G saying yes or no to move forward with the seven or eight items that are identified. And then jump to Measure Q and this Measure Q as it's laid out for the moment. Makes sense. I think the council member Salazar asked a really good question at the beginning. How much fluke difference do we have from tonight? To the adoption of the budget to try to be next year's budget adoption because you're going to learn, we're all going to learn a lot of new things about Measure Q that we didn't anticipate. Right? Not not nothing bad. We can get more tools to be able to 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 be more more crafty with all this. So. That would be my suggestion. The mayor and I, and it's a great talk about this earlier today about. How are we going to get you guys through this tonight? And my only text to the CFO was it's going to be a long night. So when do we start? When do we get done?
Hopefully not. So. You you would ask to take G first then go to Q.
That would be the suggestion.
Okay. Let's do that. So we don't need, again, we're giving directions. But I mean, we can look for some consensus or stuff. I don't know that we need. We don't need an elevator pitch. It's just about, you know, if there's some nuance, we need to add to it, but again, we're trying to. Continue this process. So I'm just going to go ahead and it's it is a city council top priority initiatives as well, most of them. Not all, but it's the ones that are bullet pointed that they did. So I'm just going to kind of see if if. If everybody says, yeah, go, then we don't even need to to discuss it further. Let's go start at the top. Community, I'm sorry, community communications and engagement program. That was one of our initiative. That was one of our initiatives. Is that something that we want to see Measure G funds? Considered to to be used for.
Just one simple yes or no?
It would be great.
Okay. Let me guess. Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, that puts me in the middle.
I think at this point it was a. Communication and engagement program. Can can you remind me just to give them a little clarity? I mean, clarity, they just summarize.
Certainly, it really is an internal and external communications effort. How, what what is our policy? What's your program going to be with communications? I think one of the things you heard one of the speakers say where there was tonight is our engagement with the community is somewhat lacking. And and I recognize that. I think the council recognizes that. How do we set that up? And I will quote Councilman Salazar again. How do we build the pub? How do we continue to build on the good public trust we have? I think that's such a nice signature. So how do you know how to build on that, right? What are those tools? Then that's really what this is about.
Okay, I'm going to be a yes. Let's move on to next. Mitigation of illegal dumping and maintenance of street medias.
Yes.
Yes, I'm like, yes. Just just to be clear, we can still talk about the funding levels and stuff like that.
Yes.
Just whether it just stays on those considerations.
With that caveat, I'll say yes. Can I ask a question while we're right here? Maybe I mean, I think I figured I wanted to make sure. Do we have a number that we're spending now? Recology is doing our gum and pick up and then they eventually back charge us through.
Well, I think it's in it's in the new contract agreement later.
So we mentioned we pay for it. It'll be interesting to know. Well, and then why is this? I'm sorry. Yeah, I think I hear where you're going with the question. Like, doesn't Recology pay for this? Why are we paying for this more because we need to use these ones or something else? What we described in the council goal setting was that illegal dumping. Littering and the unhoused situation is calm, very complex. They travel through various things and various pathways. The recology agreement that we have with them is for illegal dumping. So there's a big refrigerator in the roadway. They come to pick up. And then we work that out through our franchise agreement. The other concerns is the littering where there are little pieces of paper where we get people to go pick up. And we try to do that through various means, but there are also ones that fall onto other properties that we want to try to address. And then the some of the some of the combination of both the illegal dumping and the littering can happen around. Homeless candidates or around the unhoused, which is also another complex problem. So what I believe the cost that's involved here. Is a common is a. Is a combination of having to address all three with the tools that we already currently have and then some additional ones to backfill into that gap. That that was what was requested at the council goal setting. So yes, we do have a recolage. Garbage pickup or sorry, illegal dumping pickup. That doesn't actually resolve the problem, but I think we were trying to achieve a goal set, both answers. Okay, so we're going to be able to get into further details about whether we're cleaning up the cameras and and all this. Okay. So yes.
Okay, residential parking permit program assessment.
And and that's to clarify that, you know, I still agree that these priorities are are still important, that they're still priorities. My. My no on these will be only because I don't think they should be funded funded by Measure G. And I think we discussed that we will revisit. The the expenditure now because the first one, the communication, that's what I brought up. I still think we should do it. I just don't think we do it to the one thousand dollars. But I'm going to say no on this.
I'm going to say a no on this one as well because I don't believe that this is sufficiently funded through Measure G. I think it's a it's a complicated issue that. It has a high probability of of not having a good solution. Because of the the basic issue of the too many cars, not enough spaces and we have to we have to get our community over the. The the major philosophical issue of the issue or permits that there are spaces on the street. So. This doesn't mean I'm I'm definitely not voting that we should never revisit the risk. Probably be part of a program. I don't think you should be funding it out of Measure G. I'm a no.
So by voting no on Measure G doesn't mean that we still. Unexpected either city managers should apply a different.
Now, because my goal is five of them. Yeah, you're telling me not use that. So we've measured G.
Correct. We have three no's, so it's.
For the record, I don't know. Okay, let's just get going. retrofit the R O S, streetlights. Yes, yes.
Yes.
We're all yeses. Strategic analysis of major city owned properties. No, no. Oh, no, no. Okay. See, it's good. Fire minute wildfire mitigation, yes, yes. I hear five guesses. Okay. Enhanced education enforcement for the Fourth of July holiday. No. Is there any yeses?
No, I'm a I'm a conflicted yes. My. This is my issue. So. For the education piece, frankly, when I said this in my comments that I sent in. The. Like we're going to do mailers saying, hey, guess what? Illegal fireworks are illegal. I don't think that that's a good use of our money. Because the people who are setting off illegal fireworks know full well they're breaking the law and then there will be five in court. And so I think it's I think that that's always too many. My concern. I know that the. I know that the enforcement efforts have been large and growing every year and have been have been significant. My concern is banning them all together. Is it's just for you. It's basically signaling to the folks who. Who are doing the silly activity that, hey, great, it's it might be the odds getting caught or even less. So I'm really conflicted about just being a full on no. For it. I think I'm hoping maybe we can spend a little bit less. And they and maybe rate it a little bit, but even aiming all together is not a panic and support. So I'm still going to get this.
We have four no's and I just want to say like the mailer. And the mailer did buy maybe about six thousand dollars, six thousand. I agree, the mailer doesn't need to go because I think it goes from the mailbox to recycling that because everybody should recycle. But. That is six thousand. What we're talking about is the police. We're talking about is the extra engine. Now, can we say, well, let's just do regular staffing fire department, not do the extra engine? Well, that's great. Okay. And then one time we don't and then something happens. And we we know what what the structure fire today, it doesn't take a lot. It had nothing to do with fireworks. So who's going to sit up here and say, no, let's not have a public safety. It's the staff that costs the money, not the mailer. So I still have concerns, but anyway, I'm I should be quiet because it's already. The answer is four to one, no. So let's go to the last one, community event grant program.
Can we get it? Can I get a reminder of what what is absolutely over this place?
Sure, the community granting program was funding things such as the Ozzy Parade, funding things such as. Easter egg hunts, music in the park, the World Child Dance, I can't remember the name of that, Day of the Child, sorry. Those kinds of events, the city's portion of that of that funding.
So I'm for. I said I'm 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 for all of those things. I said I'm 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 for all of those things, for having them that that not out of measure.
But not out of measure, right? That's a no. All right, so we got to measure G. Is that held? And to be clear, what what were the what were the three winners on measure G? Uh, the three winners were community communications engagement program, mitigation of illegal dumping and maintenance of street medians, retrofit uh bring out the R O light system, uh wildfire mitigation. I believe that was it. That's why I'm clear, okay?
Yeah, yeah, it is. Yes, it was a five notes.
I was I was keeping good score on that. Yeah, I was a score. Good score. Um, okay, let's go to Q. There is, uh, we can see what it is on uh allocation of the capital program and pavement management program, stormwater, fire station number uh number fifty two. So you want to just take one at a time? We're not talking about the dollar amount, right? We're just is that we're we okay with going forward as is, because I know staffs heard that the commentary about uh, I'm sorry, twenty two, staffs heard about the one million or that kind of concern. So uh pavement management program? Scheduled for nine million?
Yes.
Yes? Anybody know?
Yes, we're not talking about. Right, I feel in there.
No, I mean, the amount is important.
For two.
So for two?
Yeah, right.
For for this. But how many years, I just correct.
You can guess, we're not gonna have money for twenty twenty seven.
Okay. Stormwater.
Yes.
Okay, yes.
I think that's.
Obviously, but I know all four. Uh, fire station fifty two, I mean, yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, all three are, I think, you must be, correct me, all three of them are, you know. So um, did I, yes, is that, yes. So the the thing that it doesn't do is uh those items that were not concurred to for by direction on measure G, then those funds, as you already made it clear, well, if if they're gonna ask for waivers, they're gonna need this, it's gonna go to it's not going away. It's just going to go to the general fund, which is gonna increase the deficit. So we're solving to speak on it. So you moved about three quarters of a million dollars from measure G back to the general fund, which takes your general fund deficit deficit up to nearly two million at this point. Um. You, but and you have three quarters of a million dollars of measure G money now that is not allocated. We can come back to the recommended allocation. My sense is I know what you guys will ask us to do with this, but when you drive home, just give it a thought. Yeah, okay. Point me, yeah. No, and 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 I think to Councilmember Salazar, I mean. And let me tell you. Five hundred block of Acacia has been asking and asking, and I will tell you, uh, there are street, and I can say, okay, I have one around the corner, but somebody else can say the same darn thing too. But they are getting to a point that I know the cost is high, uh, but at at some point, you know. Those have, folks will have an expectation between G and Q that they're going to see. Let me tell you, fifteen million dollars has been spent. That's not, that's not nothing. Two point five, I think, is right on sidewalks and other stuff. So a lot has been spent as it should. But then I know that we're still going to have, and every elected will have, any community in this cabin. What about my street? So anyway, enough. Um, okay, uh, does staff need any other direction or comment? Oh. Sorry, did I steal a pair? So what the council did with measure Q was affirmed our first year's proposal. That's gobbling up a bunch of money that's not available in the second year, the third year. Fourth year, remember, there's a third. Fourth year, there is a second tranche, right? So what's what? Again, I'm gonna make sure Vice Mayor Medina and then the council is comfortable with. If you're gonna spend the, I'm sorry, I don't have the numbers in front of me anymore. If you're gonna do this seventeen and a half million dollars um first year.
I don't know. Ten fourteen.
Yeah, so basically, it's it's the first tranche that you're allocating, and if you're gonna chew up a a big chunk of that in the first year, it's not available in year two and three. As long as we're all piece of that, that's, so you need to make sure you guys are okay with that.
You're gonna understand?
Well, that's why that was why I was here. That was why I brought it up.
Right.
That I had a big seventeen and a half of the first tranches on both sides. And if you if you pull back the stretchy, you know, I think we're down to seven or in the second year?
It's kind of.
That for measure Q, that doesn't, that doesn't cover any measure. A, measure W, gas tax. So there is, there's a slide. And that's still, that still takes the center down. Right? And I said, I think, and as well as the stormwater won't be in a million, I I think seventeen and a half million dollars for a first tranche is probably around five hundred.
You know, we don't have capacity. We can't get any. We can't squeeze it any tighter. The 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 lemon is been squeezed.
I thought it was thirty three, that you told our mayor, the first, so the end of the tranche. Three, three to mayor, um.
So in four years, we basically have thirty four million dollars to be spent in four years. So you know how that, this has been the challenge the staff has struggled with is if we're going to build part or all of a fire station. Um, we need to time the bond issuances in a way that we can reach that eighty five percent completion. Um, if, you know, if the desire is to, you know, anything is possible. It's a great program. It's a great problem to have, but we have thirty four million dollars, basically.
We have thirty four million dollars. By what year, like?
In the next five years, we have thirty four million dollars. Starting.
Next year, we have thirty four million dollars.
Yes.
Okay, so we could tranche thirty four million dollars.
Right.
Yeah, so within that, we could tranche twenty six million dollars. Right, it's thirty four. Our limit right now is thirty four million.
If we do it all this year, yes. Okay, so part of the reason that you get to the uh forty four million is that we're allowing the assessed value to grow, right? Which signifies this greater bonding capacity. So the lot, the later the longer we wait to issue bonds, the more capacity there is, the more money there is. But that, I believe the message that we were sort of working under is that we need to demonstrate some progress or some use of measure Q sooner rather than later. So the option of waiting until five years to even, you know, to improve that it may not be in the cards, but that's forced council decision.
For sure. I'm not gonna vote no on spending this money. I understand that we're estimating it after. So if if the council, do I need to make a motion to increase it or is trying to figure out how we can? Like. If no one else agrees that we shouldn't, not as far as I know, that it's okay, I I I'm fine, that's there's one of five. But I think we should look at the graph. We just talked about stormwater, a million is a bad day on cuts on emergencies. It's not a big problem. But the detail that we have are one point decisions, otherwise I told you that. I have uh, Councilman Hamilton, I did have a meeting. Two weeks ago, first initially meeting. Things have changed and I've learned more that we didn't have a hundred trillion dollars. We had, I brought three or four. So as we're looking for, get some kind of one direction, I heard about to be all once and final. I'm not gonna go no on going forward with this plan, but I would love to hear from my colleagues. Do they, they are agreed that we need to follow up with additional funding in in here too?
Yes, Councilmember Alvarez.
I'm I do agree with Councilmember Jorge Medina. I think I actually wrote a note on Monday that I wrote to allocate for again for the stormwater on the fiscal of twenty seven, fiscal year twenty seven.
You're not. Very fun. And that's Councilmember Alvarez said she had made a notation on her uh document that uh she wanted in twenty seven. Heard it correctly. Five million is stormwater. That is just something she was concurring with Vice Mayor Medina, but that was what she specifically was making a statement on that. Does anybody else wanna chime in?
I have a concern that uh may not be expended, right?
Yeah. Then do we have staff capacity to implement it? That's, I mean, it's great to say, let's do it. Well, great. Okay, but it, what's the reality of getting in done with everything else? Let me make a suggestion. Uh, the CFO cannot kick me way over here, so, but the ACM can't kick me through yet. So if you can agree to that, and this is your twenty six numbers, but you guys haven't tentatively said yes to say, yeah, I'll do budget on that. We're not gonna go out into the bond market until the end of, yeah, this fall. So we'll have time to adjust that that issuance if we need to increase it in recognition of the Vice Mayor's general statement and Councilmember Salazar's statement, excuse Councilmember Alvarez's statement about we should be spending more. Let us look at that and figure out the risks of doing so and, you know, what I don't wanna get caught with, and it won't be me, because I'll probably be long gone by then. But I don't want the council and the staff caught with, oh, my God, we have to spend all this money suddenly. And then that's just a, that that's just a frenzy, and it's not worth it. And and so I'm we're trying to be cautious and careful here, and I I appreciate the CFO's efforts and this, I mean, they're 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 genuine. Our concern is can we really spend the money timely? And I think that's that's really the the driving, the driving issue here. So plus, then the final thing is if you take too much upfront, there's just not enough. We won't be able to do the second tranche till much later. So you might find yourself with a spending spree and then dipping down for a while until the assessments grow back up again. Let us do some modeling. We can come back to you, but as long as there's general agreement with the first year funding plan, um, I I think that buys us the time.
Okay, sure, everybody. Yeah, I I mean, that that last, that last point that was made there is really, I think, an important one. I think it's, I think and obviously, we're gonna we're gonna come back and 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 talk about it, which is something to consider as we head into those discussions, is that having a frenzy of activity and then a lull and then another, uh, because of the way that the funding is working, I don't think it's a good message that having it be more more consistent, I think, is is better. So this is, that's just to be considered. I have a probably dumb last question. Um, can we bring up slide twenty two? Um, and this is probably because it's late. And I'm looking at, I'm looking at numbers you're getting produced, so I just wanted, I just wanted to just to confirm something, and again, it could be a tough question. Um, so on slide twenty two. We have the measure Q showing the 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 bond tranches coming in above and then the uh capital programs spending that money down below. And something seems out of order for me.
Twenty two.
Yep. So twenty six, we get seventeen and a half million dollars. And in twenty six, we spent twelve of it, and then in twenty seven, we spent five and a half million dollars, bringing us to seventeen point five. And then in twenty eight, we bring in no money and we spend thirteen point five. And then in twenty nine, we get, we get the twenty seven million where we spent the money already the year before. And just that's again, probably because it's late, right?
No, it's it's a very good question, Councilmember Hamilton, the um the the way it's modeled this way is that the construction of the fire station is anticipated to take three years. And so the bond, the second bond issuance is reimbursing effectively the general fund for fronting the money in fiscal year twenty eight.
I see. That explains it.
Thank you. Yeah, let's go. Uh, can see, and I'm, for the record, I'm also starting to hear voices. Thank you for bringing that up. Once again, just we have to learn that all of a sudden adjusting numbers, saying this and saying that, the dais, and we don't know what the repercussions are. Sounds good, feels good. But do we have the capacity? And we'll get the big picture. So thank you for helping guide us. With that, let's move on to item nine, council committee report house. Are there any? I had some, uh, actually, I have quite a bit tonight, so everybody sit back.
Mine will be quick.
I know, I know.
Uh, so I just wanted to uh mention that last week I went to Sacramento with the C K legislative uh delegation, uh, and then to uh advocate for a few uh upcoming pieces of legislation, mostly around ground act form. And Senator Scott, we know measured that he's promoting transportation planning. Uh, C K has a number of issues that, uh, and we also uh advocated for a number of regional projects that C K is supporting. And I I bring it up because uh while the projects themselves are very well received by the members of the assembly and senators that we spoke to, uh, but everybody was very reluctant to commit because they felt that there was gonna be very little funding available for district projects this year. And so, um, you know, as we build our budget, I I just wanted to share that that sort of sobering piece in views from Sacramento that uh that they uh they don't expect to have a lot of extra classes.
Okay, thank you. Um, for me, um, I'll try to ramble it. Uh. On the nineteenth, we had a prehospital emergency medical services, the AMR service, uh, and the dispatches that is done through the county for fire and AMR. So I I as the chair, I appointed an ad hoc uh committee from that group to meet with supervisor Canova and Mueller. And this is regards to dispatch cost increase, which are significant from the county to everybody within the group. Uh, and I mean, this is probably money not budgeted for, and this would be more to the debt. So we are trying to meet, try to find some ground. Um, so we're going to that element. Um, we had our first emergency services council of the new group. Uh, they are now, was D E M, and they are switching the name of the H C, are you?
County Department of Emergency Management.
County Department of Emergency Management. That is now the new name and with the new logo. Um, on the twenty seventh, commute.org. The contract is expiring for the services, the shuttles and and the service of those individuals who are providing that, and they're going up significantly in increase, significant. And there are, some of the corporations are not so am to want to contribute. Um, and with the, and it's not a small, so um depending on what happens with the uh negotiations of the current contract, there it could be some challenging times for the economics of it. And finally, on Saturday, I was sworn in uh on the first for the air air quality board. I sit on the policy grants and technology committee and the stationary source committee. And that is a position that I believe I'm being told that they're gonna confirm it tomorrow, because I don't think a same person has ever served on that. And that is it for me on that. Now let's move on to uh comments from council members. Don't talk, okay? Um, did want to just um acknowledge that um on the twenty sixth, the cert swearing in uh occurred, uh, which the uh police chief uh did for that group. So another cert program is in there with a lot, some educators as well. Learning that process. Oh, I'm sorry, fire chief. Don't worry, I'm not gonna, we're not gonna promote you while 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 you're sitting here. Thank you though. Um. With the council cities, the U S A, where Vice Mayor Medina and Councilmember Hamilton uh were there. Um, March third, I went to Parkside. They had CPR training, fire department was there and also granted from the community uh foundation. So the seventh and eighth graders were there. I was asked just to kind of come and see. So that was interesting to watch seventh and eighth graders uh learning that. Um, on March fourth, uh, Vice Mayor Medina and I were at the uh Lower Colma's and Creek signing ceremony. Um, on March fourth, uh, Vice Mayor Medina and I were at the Lower Colma's Creek signing ceremony. And that's to protect the water treatment plant that South City and San Bruno partners with since nineteen fifty one. And that was the signing of the Army Corps of Engineers over, uh, for the work that they have done. And again, I think the projection, pardon my reminder, but I think if that plant went out completely, I mean, it had to be due, and it's like eight hundred million dollars minimally. So those, uh, those improvements are significant. Um, and on March twenty second, the girls, uh, I mean, not February, was the girls softball opening. They had a, a very nice day. Um, there be no other council comments. Finally, I just want to remind folks that this Thursday, Mike Palmer, Thursday four P M at Clara Field for his, uh, extraordinary work. And should there be weather issues, we moved inside here. Um, this Saturday is baseball opening day. I think the weather will be okay, but I'm sure we'll wait here. Um, and, uh, an experience, um, I had not had yet, but was a swear in a person who passed the California bar. And I guess you need a certain level of an individual to swear in, and the city attorney said, yeah, she had to do the same. So it was a privilege to be able to actually, and not that I, he gave me his card for services, but, um, but it was a nice honor to have. And then finally, uh, this is, uh, you know, there's a lot of religious and other things, and we'll talk about it another time too. But recognizing this also as a commencement this month of Ramadan and the Muslim holy month of fasting and spiritual renewal, and commending the Muslim, uh, community for their faith. Now, if my colleagues remember, we didn't finish closed session. So what I am permitted to is adjourn this meeting, this, this meeting will be adjourned until the next city council regular meeting on March twenty fifth, twenty twenty five at seven o'clock. We will now reconvene our adjourned special meeting and go back into closed session.
Good times. Hey, so, um.
Hey, City Council has come out of closed session, there's no reportable action, therefore we will now adjourn the special meeting of the city council. And again, we will be back March twenty fifth, twenty twenty two. With that meeting is adjourned, enjoy the rest of your week.